Ms. Elrod. Don't believe she's joined yet. Ms. Masters?
Present.
Uh, Dr. DeBon McKinney?
Present.
Ms. Bush?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Player Peters?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Pupa Walker?
Present.
Ms. Tyler? Don't believe she's joined yet either. And Ms. Bugs?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have, uh, seven present.
Alright. Thank you so much. Please let me know when anyone else is, when anyone else joins. Uh, with that-
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Rachel Ann. I have joined.
Alright. Thank you, madam. Alright, with that, we'll move on to governance. Uh, can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
This is Sharon. I'm of approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. This is Jeannie.
Any discussion? Alright, Dr. Sevier, if you would do a roll call.
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye. Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Masters?
Aye.
Ms. Masters votes aye. Dr. DeBon McKinney?
Aye.
Dr. DeBon McKinney votes aye. Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye. Ms. Tyler?
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. Uh, Chair Bugs?
Aye.
Bugs votes aye. Madam Chair, nine ayes.
Alright, thank you so much for that. Uh, we're about to step into the Director's Report, an update on our students. Moving forward, we will use this space for board updates. I sent out committee lists, which I'll read off a little later on, but I sent out committee lists. We want to make sure that we're updating one another and updating the public on what's happening in different spaces that we sit in. So with that, Dr. Battle, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Good evening and thank you, board members. Um, the focus of this month's Director's Report is our top focus every day here at MMPS, and that is our students. We've had a very, very different start to our school year, but I couldn't be more proud of the staff, students, and their families who have worked to make the best of a challenging situation to ensure the academic and social-emotional needs of our students are being met. As we've discussed at previous meetings, we started phasing students back into classrooms for families who chose that option, starting with our students with the most exceptional needs, followed by our youngest learners after fall break. For some, it's too fast; for others, it's not fast enough. But through it all, our decision-making process has been focused on the safety of everyone. COVID-19 is a polarizing topic. If someone believes it is a hoax, or that it's not a serious threat, or that the risk is overblown, there isn't anything I'll be able to say or do to convince them otherwise. I've approached this issue with the belief, based on scientific data, that COVID-19 is real, it is a serious health risk, and that we should be doing what we can within reason to limit the spread of this virus, both in our schools and in the community. This is a balancing act, and one that requires us to weigh through differences of opinion among the medical and scientific community, along with an unfortunate amount of politics mixed in by some. Among the members of the Council of Great City Schools, nearly all have started virtually, with only a few beginning the year in person. Instead of looking at peer districts around the country, some have been asking and looking at the suburban and rural districts around Tennessee as examples. Let me be clear: during the summer, Nashville was not only the largest hotspot in the state, but one of the biggest hotspots in the country. That required us to start completely virtually to limit exposure to our students and staff, and to help reduce the threat of COVID-19 spread. Because of the actions taken by Metro and the community at large, we have now gone from the worst in terms of cases per capita in Tennessee to 75th. That is great progress, hard-won progress, but progress that can be fleeting if we don't move forward cautiously and judiciously in bringing students and staff together in relatively large groups for long periods of time. In terms of progress, our positive test rate has gone from 9.7% when I reported to you back on August 25th to 4.3% as of yesterday. Our cases per 100,000 residents have gone from 21.4 on August 25th to 15.4 yesterday. In terms of regression, or going backwards, our transmission rate went from 0.9% on the 25th to 1.04%. This is a good example of while we haven't settled on one single metric for determining the future and safety of our students and staff, we have to look at the full context, and the context shows improvements overall, with areas of improvement still to come. We must continue to monitor the city's progress and ours as a district as we make decisions with the safety of students and staff in mind. Something we do know from scientific studies is that younger students are less susceptible to COVID-19 and for transmitting the virus. But they are not immune, and serious health consequences can occur if they contract it. While as a society, we make moral and legal distinctions between those under 18 and those over 18, a virus doesn't necessarily see those distinctions. The largest study to date has been among youth in South Korea, which showed children younger than 10 transmit to others much less often than adults do. But the risk is not zero, and those between the ages of 10 and 19 can spread the virus as least as well as adults do. Statewide, the number of cases of school-aged children breaks down to 25% among children ages 5 through 10, 18% ages 11 through 13, and 57% ages 14 through 18. Nashville has the second-most cases since they started tracking data, which makes sense, as we are the second-largest county by population. However, over the last two weeks, we've seen 96 cases, whereas Williamson County saw 117. Anecdotally, we have watched as Spring Hill, Fairview, Harpeth, and other high schools have had to close around us because of the spread and exposure of COVID-19 among their students and staff. So again, while information is evolving about the impact of COVID-19 on the younger population, it is safe to say that older students are more at risk for contracting or spreading COVID-19. Some have asked about a hybrid model, where students can attend two days on and two days off on a rotating basis. Academically, we think that would be the worst for students, as a student's time and attention will be divided between remote and in-person, so it's not to be effective with either setting. From a safety perspective, as Dr. William Haynag, Associate Professor of Epidemiology at Harvard University, has said, "The hybrid model is probably among the worst that we could be putting forward, if our goal is to stop the virus getting into schools." That's why we're moving forward with the all-in-person and all-virtual options for students. Speaking of options, on Friday, the decision survey ended for families. Over the last two days, our school administrators have been reaching out to families who did not respond to the survey to get one last shot at collecting their preferences before being assigned to in-person learning. Our results from the parent decision surveys show about 54% of students choosing in-person learning, while 46% chose virtual. In terms of actual attendance breakdowns, we can anticipate this will be the general trend as we phase students back into the classroom. Now, schools will take that information provided by parents and make scheduling and staffing adjustments to match virtual and in-person students with like teachers and staff, so that all students have access to a high-quality education regardless of which option they chose. I'd like to take a quick moment to recognize Pencil, one of our most important and valued partners for the role they played in supporting our efforts to provide school supplies for every student in MMPS. We're in the final stages of deploying paper pens, pencils, crayons, colored pencils, those critical items that all our students need to support their learning. It took the teamwork of Pencil, MMPS, and many volunteers to make that happen. We've all learned more than we ever wanted to know about the crayon supply chains in a pandemic. I especially want to give our thanks to Joel Wright, who worked tirelessly for our students. He was a project lead at Pencil and was critical to helping us fulfill our commitment of making sure every student has the instructional supplies they need. Thank you to Joel and everyone at Pencil for everything you do for MMPS and for our students and teachers. As far as athletic competitions, given the smaller groups of students involved, the additional adult-to-student supervision ratio, and the disciplined nature of the activities, we have determined it is safe to return to competition with the guidelines and protocols in place for each sport or activity. This is important for our students, but also for their families. I know there is some disappointment that our first games will not allow spectators. While the Tennessee Titans are investing heavily in security and equipment to implement safety protocols to allow just 10% to 15% of their fans back in October, we realistically would not have the same resources available to manage fans during the game to require social distancing and mask compliance for even a limited number of fans. Crews have been working this week to install the NFHS Pixelight systems at our stadiums for live streaming of upcoming games. Before asking families to subscribe to this service, we want to have a chance to test the systems to ensure that fans will have an enjoyable viewing experience. So, we will be working with live camera crews to stream soccer and football games on YouTube at no charge to families and fans throughout the remainder of this week. COVID-19 has not only had an impact on how we teach, but also on how many we teach this year. Districts across the state and country are seeing enrollment declines for a variety of reasons due to this pandemic. We have gone on to great lengths to reduce the impact on school-based budgets, increasing from 50% to 75% the amount credited back to a school that sees enrollment declines over projections. But there will have to be some fiscal reallocations to take place in order to provide for equitable results across the district, as there will be increased costs to MMPS that come with the increased enrollment. As you probably know, in Tennessee, all LEAs receive BEP funding based on prior-year enrollment. This means that our funding this year will not be impacted, but under current rules, it would be affected in FY 2122. Realizing this is a statewide problem facing LEAs, the state's BEP Review Committee has been holding districts harmless in funding its top priority this year in a list of recommendations to Governor Lee. As this committee includes the House Education Chair, Mark White, we are optimistic that the governor and the legislature will follow these recommendations, but it will require our collective efforts as a district to ensure that happens. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Henson, our Chief of Operations, Dr. Mason Bellamy, our Chief of Academics and Schools, and Dr. Michelle Springer, Chief of Student Support Services, as they go into greater detail with this information. Thank you, and Chris, I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. If we could advance the slide, please. I'll begin by providing an enrollment update overview for the current school year up through Day 30. And as Dr. Battle said and indicated, similar occurrences are happening across the state and around the country as it relates to student enrollment, and we are seeing a decline as of our Day 30 enrollment numbers. Our projection for preschool through grade 12 was a total of 84,683 students. Our actual enrollment on Day 30 is 80,842, and you can see that the reduction in enrollment from projection is a little over 3,800 students and approximately 4.5%. Regarding comparison to prior year, we had projected fairly flat enrollment, so these numbers are very similar. So again, if you look at our current enrollment preschool through grade 12 of 80,842, our official enrollment last year for 2019-20 was 84,358, showing a reduction of approximately 3,500 students and a little over a 4% reduction when you look at it on a percentage basis. On this slide, we break down the enrollment by different grades and grade bands. You can see that the largest reduction on a percentage basis is occurring in preschool and pre-K, as well as in kindergarten. You can see what those numbers are, the reduction in numbers, as well as the reduction on a percentage basis. You also can see that in the high school grades, grades 9 through 12, we actually are seeing an increase, a slight increase, from what we had in the prior year. And again, the grand total of the reduction when compared to the prior year is just over 3,500 students and a little over 4% of a reduction. We break it further down into the different clusters, and you can see by cluster. Some clusters are larger or smaller than others, and so we show the total enrollment for last year, 2019-20, for each cluster, the current enrollment at Day 30, and what the change is as it relates to total enrollment numbers, as well as on a percentage basis. And you can see the differences as it relates to the different clusters, as well as our lottery schools, our specialty schools, which would include our alternative learning centers and our early learning centers, as well as some of our non-traditional schools. And then the charter schools, you can see, there is an increase. This was, as was projected. If you remember from our budget discussions, we have a number of charter schools that continue to add grades as part of their growth plan that was approved as part of their approved charter agreement. So there is an increase in the total charter enrollment of 664 students. And following up on what Dr. Battle was saying earlier, as it relates to individual school budgets, each fall, school budgets are adjusted based on actual enrollment comparisons to enrollment projections, and so this is something we do every year, every fall. Schools significantly above or below enrollment projections will receive a budget adjustment, but as Dr. Battle indicated, we are adjusting that to where in the past we would take a 50% reduction to minimize the disruption at the school level. This year, we are only taking a 25% reduction, because we know that there is the possibility that student enrollment will rebound as we go further into the in-person scenario. Efforts are being made to minimize the disruption for students and staff, and that's the reason why we have changed the methodology, as well as the timing of these budget adjustments. And principals will receive Central Office Budget Support to help them prepare for in-person and virtual learning, and those meetings with principals will occur this week, later this week. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Mason, as he discusses the phased-in return of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Henson. Thank you, board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'd like to talk to you about exciting phased-in return of our students, and we'll go on to the next slide and jump on in. So as you guys are well aware, and Dr. Battle mentioned in her comments, we have had students coming back to our schools since September 9th, when our contracted special-day schools began. Last week, on the 16th, our own special-day schools began. We had some great, great days in those three schools. Dr. Battle and myself visited a couple and got to see some great things going on. And tomorrow, we will look to welcome back nearly 600 students across 60 different schools. And you can see the rest of the dates that we have listed here for you are previously announced dates that we are looking to return. So pre-K through 2, coming back after fall break, with half-days on the 13th and 14th. 3rd and 4th grade to phase in the following week, and then 5th and 6th grade, and then 7th and 8th grade, their phase-in day will be after the November 3rd election, so that is on a Thursday, whereas the other, or, sorry, on Wednesday, whereas the other dates are on Tuesdays. So that's the discrepancy there. Additionally, the 12th of October is going to be a day that no synchronous teaching will be going on, so that our schools can come back from fall break and prepare for that phased-in return. And again, so you've seen this timeline before. We're excited, and the work going on to welcome our youngest learners back right after fall break. And so, Dr. Battle also mentioned our reopening survey that we sent and closed out last Friday. We've been busy at the school level contacting families, but we are nearing a 75% response rate at this point, which is really good for most surveys, and we're hopeful that we've closed out quite a bit more today as we look to make those final decisions. But right now, we've got about 73, it's about 73.1% of students reporting a response at this point, and a little under 27% that we're still waiting to reach. If we're not able to do that, these students will be assumed that they'll be returning in person, as we mentioned when we rolled the survey out and multiple times through that communication. Additionally, where, as we break down those preferences right now, percentages are holding pretty steady, at about 54% in-person and 46% virtual, as you heard Dr. Battle say. We do have more data across grade levels, with younger learners reporting slightly higher, but for the most part, the grade levels are holding very steady to what appears to be a district average at this point. And so now, we're going to talk about what we're doing to welcome them back, and how we prepare them as they enter our doors the week after fall break. So I've already mentioned that we finalized the survey decision, which is a huge part of the scheduling process. That is a piece of information that our schools have been clamoring for and needing, so we tried to balance the needs of giving parents as much time as possible with the needs of our schools to have as much time to plan. So our schools are doing a lot of great work. I was out at one of our help centers yesterday and spoke with a principal who's finalizing those survey decisions and working through the scheduling process right now with her students. Additionally, with that, we've got staffing decisions we're making. And so we've been working in tandem with Chief Barnes and the HR office to make sure that those staffing decisions account for needed accommodations of the staff. So we've got principals that are balancing, as again, as Dr. Battle mentioned in her opening remarks, balancing the needs and preferences of our families, both traditional, in-person, attendance, and virtual, with the needs of our staff, and how we're able to accommodate our staff that have needs for that while providing the best instruction to students we possibly can. We've provided a great deal of logistical prep and setup of our buildings, guidance through some SharePoint sites and through our support of our executive directors to the principals. We'll continue to do that in the weeks ahead, but our principals are finalizing their buildings to demonstrate the way that we want our classrooms to look and feel for our students when they come back, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later. And again, we are using all that information to make final scheduling decisions in this week and in the weeks ahead, as we're getting the final pieces of that information, so we can move on. And so I'd like to talk to you a little bit about a day in the life, what it might look like. Particularly, we're going to talk about our youngest learners right now, but mentioning that middle school will be phasing back in, in the weeks after fall break, and we can also announce that our schools will be doing virtual open houses as they're coming on here to give our parents more of a snapshot into that, what that could look like for their particular school. But essentially, you'll see that our arrival procedures, you're going to see a lot of things that look similar to what you're accustomed to, with minor differences along the way as well. So you're used to your student being greeted when they get off the bus or out of the car, if you're a car rider, and you're going to continue to see that, albeit while staff are wearing PPE, while they're wearing masks, as well as our students are. And they may be asked questions about how they're feeling that morning and other safety protocols that we've established, that again, we've communicated out to our families. Our breakfast and lunch schedules, our meal schedules, could look a little different. You could be used to universal breakfast. Some schools already had that in the classroom. Others do not, and we're looking at ways that we can have breakfast be grab-and-go, and ultimately avoid choke points in a building where lots of students are congregating. So all of our schools are working through processes where breakfast and lunch could look different. We'll have to space out the cafeteria to accommodate for social distancing and following the CDC guidelines whenever possible, to the extent possible. You'll probably see cafeterias being utilized slightly less than you're used to seeing, with spaces in between students at some of those tables. When you get into the classroom environment and the actual teaching environment, you'll see desks facing one direction, much like many adults on the call tonight probably remember their elementary school was set up. You know, in the past years, we've really focused on collaborative learning, cooperative groups. We've had shoulder partners, face partners, if you've been around the elementary school, where they sit facing one another and shoulder to shoulder. And we have to do away with much of that, and all of that at this point this year. So you'll see desks facing, all oriented in the same direction, and you'll see walkways marked for our teachers as visuals for our young learners too, and our students, so that we're making sure when we're traveling in classrooms that we're using the appropriate pathways and keeping distance amongst our students whenever possible. In addition to that, we've always taught appropriate behaviors for school, but some of those appropriate behaviors are now going to be expounded upon. So we've always taught our youngest learners in particular that you keep your hands to yourself. But you can see a graphic at the bottom of our slide here. This comes directly from one of our special-day schools. A principal sent this out, the principal at Merle, one of our schools here in town, and she is teaching behaviors in every aspect of the school: bathroom, classroom, everywhere in the context of where you're at at the time. This one came from her classroom chart. So you can see, we'll be talking about what it means to keep your body under control, to stay in your designated area versus roaming freely like you may once have, how we line up in transition appropriately, giving graphics on the floor to do that, maintaining our social distancing, and of course, wearing our mask at all times. So we will be teaching our youngest learners how to do those things respectfully and how it looks in a classroom environment. And our schedules are being built to maximize our ability to cohort students throughout the day. We know there's a lot of talk about that. And so while we cannot limit all transitions, and we cannot limit all intermingling, we are certainly doing whatever we can with our schedules to limit to any ability possible, any kind of intermingling, and keep students co-horted together. That's much easier to do at the elementary and middle school levels as they return this fall. You're also going to see hand sanitation stations more frequently than you've seen in the years past. Lots of you are used to seeing soap dispensers in the bathrooms and Germax dispensers on walls. We have implemented additional ones in buildings at entry and exit points, entering the cafeteria, and additionally, at different points in the building, so, as well as more frequent opportunities for students to use those. But I mentioned that lots of things will look the same, and one element that has not changed in Metro Nashville is that some of our schools will continue to use standard school attire, and that'll continue to be a school-level decision, and the principal having discretion in that realm, as we encourage all of our schools to work with our families and support them in the ways that support your school's plans, behaviors of students, and our families to the degree appropriate. Next slide, please. And finally, for you knowing, I want to talk a little bit about the curriculum we've adopted. The board will remember adopting this curriculum back in July. It was agreed upon to purchase and to utilize this year as the curriculum in Metro Nashville Public Schools, our Florida Virtual School. And so we've seen a lot of questions recently about how that'll be implemented, and our Curriculum and Instruction Department, our Teaching and Learning Division's hard at work to roll out professional development by early next week for our teachers, and so they can start to familiarize themselves with what it might look like to deliver that in person. But I want to assure everyone that that curriculum will be standardized across the district and used for both virtual and in-person students. The groups will be paced identically. We will not have separate scope and sequence for virtual versus in-person students. They should be, to the degree we always are, working in similar spots in the unit as schools that are teaching similar students. So a second grader at one school should be in a very similar place, albeit maybe not identical based on a teacher's pacing, in the same place as a peer in another school. Additionally to that, our virtual students are still going to have access to their teachers in a virtual manner. We're still encouraging, well, not encouraging, we're still requiring office hours, and we'd encourage any family to tap into those virtual supports that we've really been able to refine for the last couple months in the virtual space. So again, just want to clarify for folks that Florida Virtual is our one unique, our one curriculum across Metro Nashville Public Schools for the year, and the delivery will certainly look a little different in person, as your student sees a teacher daily. However, they will not be receiving additional material, additional curriculum. The work will be no more or less rigorous. It will just be delivered in different mechanisms based on the parent's preference and how they chose whether what worked best for their family, either virtual or in-person. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Springer now, and thank you again for your time this evening. I look forward to your questions at the end.
Thank you, Dr. Bellamy. It is my pleasure to highlight our students. For all of us on the call this evening, it is about our students, every student, every day. We are the hub of support, and it is about growth towards meeting our goals for college and career readiness, health and wellness, social services, and engagement. And we've had a strong focus on attendance. And we have a goal. Our goal is to have 95% average daily attendance by the end of the school year. Average daily attendance is simply the percentage of enrolled students who are attending each and every day. So for our first 30 days, as you can see, we are at 91.08 for Fall 2020. Last year this time, we were at 95.24. What we know is that our families and our students have experienced some transitions with virtual learning, and this is a different kind of year. We want to make sure that we take that into consideration as we are tracking our average daily attendance. We know we're making progress in this area. We started this year with an average daily attendance of 87.4%. We are making progress. If you can advance to the next slide. What you'll see here is an MMPS absence distribution. This report shares the grade span, the number of our active students, the number of active students with absences, as well as their absence distribution. And you'll see on this slide where our students either have zero days of absences, one to two days of absences, three to four, five to nine, so on and so forth. What I'd like to highlight is that the vast majority of our students are engaged in the teaching and learning process. Towards the bottom, you see our district totals. 57.1% of our students have zero absences. 20.3 have one to two days of absences. 7.6 percentage of our students have three to four absences, and you see the rest of our data points. 5.3% have five to nine absence- And you see the rest of our data points. 5.3% have five to nine absence days of absences. Three to four have 10 to 14 days of absences, and 3.2 have 15 or more days of absences. So to sum that up, 77% of our students are engaged in the teaching and learning process on an average. We know that there's more work that can be done, and we're committed to implementing strategies and processes to support our students. I'd like to highlight a few of those here today. And I want to first start by saying thank you to our board members. You helping to push the word out about our outdoor virtual learning health centers has really gotten the word out to our families and our students. To date, in just three weeks, we have been able to support over 3,000 families. That's no easy feat. More than 3,100 of our students, additional students, have logged on since we began this initiative. We were aiming to find all of our students and get them actively engaged. And we know this is the right work. That type of collaboration between the board, the schools, the communities, and our central office hub of support is going to be key in providing those tangible supports to our students. Our locations will be open for another two weeks. We know that they're in high demand, and you see the locations here on the screen. So if any family has any need, please join us at Glenview Elementary, Mountain View Elementary, Tuscaloosa Elementary, Jerry Baxter Middle School, Crestwell Elementary, and Donaldson Middle School. Another initiative that we've put in place to ensure that we are reaching every student every day is our Navigator Support. Navigators is really truly about connecting each student to a path of success with one-on-one check-ins on a weekly basis. To date, in two weeks of implementation, we've had 60,000 touchpoints for our students here in Metro Nashville Public Schools. In addition, 600 collaborative referrals have been generated. Those collaborative referrals connect students with resources such as counselors, social workers, food, housing, you name it. In addition to that, we've also been able to identify those needs around technology and academics and work to meet those individual needs. Again, I highlight, this is the right work. Building those relationships between the school, our teachers, and our families is going to be key in our students' success. Finally, I want to take just a few moments to highlight our virtual after-school clubs. We know that our students are gifted and they are talented, and we want students to have exploratory opportunities. As such, we have 47 personalized options for students district-wide to participate in our after-school clubs. Currently, we have about 477% participants, and we're hoping that you all will assist with getting the word out so that we can engage more, explore more, and connect our students to one another around their likes and interests. You see the different virtual club options. They range from writing in cursive, to learning the English language, to performing arts, to gaming. And again, this is the right work. Our community partners have stepped in, our teacher talents are highlighted, and we are elevating our voice and choice for our students. We have additional supports, and this is just to name a few. When we're focused on college and career readiness, we have a few strategies that we are highlighting. One, this is College Awareness Week, and you'll see the paraphernalia and the phrases and excitement around college. Even though we're in the pandemic, we still are looking ahead and looking forward to positive outcomes for our students. In addition, we have a virtual college fair that is planned for October the 29th. Please mark your calendars. Our students still need exposure to college and career readiness. In addition, we want to make sure that our students graduate and on time. So for our 11th and 12th grade students, our counselors are conducting transcript audits as well as one-to-one senior meetings to ensure they are on track for graduation and their post-secondary goals. And there's more. Absolutely. So we want to make sure no stone is unturned. We want to make sure our students have the transition support needed, that students are special populations, students with IUPs, 504, and the like. We want to make sure that we pay special attention to their needs as we transition to face-to-face learning. In addition, we believe in engagement. We have live sessions. We believe in our student voice. They have something to say, and we want to highlight it. So we have Teams Live Events scheduled. We have learning opportunities that are also live events that are scheduled on an ongoing basis to actively engage our students. We also have student ambassadors. They are leaders. They have ideas, and they are about the work. They are crafting videos. They are crafting postcards, all to engage our students who have not yet either logged on or who have limited log-on touchpoints. Next slide, please. Finally, around health and wellness and social services, our counselors and our social workers have been going out doing office hours and home visits and teletherapy sessions. If we have a student who's in crisis, we want to respond. Our counselors are fully ready and are engaging in class lessons as our students are transitioning back to face-to-face. Finally, I want to highlight the HERO program, who offers housing supports as well as our food and distribution that has been ongoing since March. Advance to the next slide, please. There's much, much more we can definitely highlight about the supports that we want to provide to our students. I want to again, highlight the support from our board. Your support, your advocacy is key for our success, and we want to ask your continued support, your support in sharing about our help centers and the other supportive measures that we have put in place to engage all students every day. We also would like to ask for your support around policy. And we're asking that you approve the use of three stockpiled days. And then lastly, your continued advocacy for the state leadership to adopt the BEP Review Committee recommendations to hold all LEAs harmless for enrollment declines that we're seeing in our 2021 school year that will impact our 2021-22 school year. So I thank you for listening to the support that we've been able to provide to our students, to listening about the enrollment, as well as the day in the life of our students as we transition back into our face-to-face learning. And I'll hand it back over to, I believe, Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Dr. Springer, Dr. Bellamy, and Chris Henson. I appreciate you all leading this conversation and elevating the work of your respective teams. So with that, Madam Chair, we will turn it back over to you. Madam Chair, I think you might be muted.
Let me tell you how I just had a whole conversation with myself. Let's try this one more time. Thank you, Dr. Battle and team, for all this information. If anyone has a question, please let me know. All right. Well, it looks like we don't have any questions.
Oh, Ms. Bugs, I have a question.
Just turn on your camera when you have a question, and I'll call in. Okay, we'll go right in.
Thanks. I actually had just a couple of questions. The first one is, I loved seeing that attendance data. I was so excited to see that we have over half of our students there without fail, not even missing one day yet. So I was very pleased to see that. So my question kind of has to do with how do we get the rest of those kids there? And I know we've been using Microsoft Teams exclusively because of the safety and privacy concerns around platforms like Zoom. But many parents and teachers have struggled to make it work for them. And I know that some teachers decided to use Zoom despite being asked not to because that was how they could reliably connect with their students. Now that we're mandating the use of Teams, how has Microsoft improved Teams to provide some of the functionality that people liked with Zoom? And if a teacher or a parent is struggling with Teams and they've contacted IT but are still having issues, what are the next steps to make sure that nobody's missing class?
Ms. Tyler, this is Dr. Battle. Your question actually ranges across a few different departments. So I'm going to first ask Dr. Springer to talk about our attendance procedures and the efforts that are taking place through our student support team. And then Dr. Bellamy can speak to our platform with Teams and the success that's been experienced across the district. So I'll kick it to you first, Dr. Springer.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As we mentioned earlier, we're making progress, but we still know that there is work to be done to get to our 95% attendance rate, and we really want to engage all of our students. So those continued efforts look like attendance teams. Every school has an attendance team in place, and those attendance teams meet regularly, actually on a bi-weekly basis. And they're looking at specific students. They're looking at trends. They are planning around those trends and identifying any barriers that we must remove for them to be able to engage. So there are some intervention strategies that they also apply. As you know, we also have our virtual help centers as well. For our kindergarten through fourth grade families, we have some positives messaging, emails, and text messages that go out to those students who are struggling to get online, to one, encourage them, and also to just alert them that, hey, we haven't seen you in a while. Are you okay? What can we do to support? I do know that, you know, we have continued efforts. We have a team that is planning right now our outreach efforts to find those students who aren't logging on. And that simply means going door to door, going to their homes, knocking on the door, finding those students, and getting them re-enrolled, re-engaged in the learning process.
And Ms. Tyler, if it's okay with you, I'll jump in and talk a little bit more about your concerns as they related to the instructional aspect. And we appreciate you bringing forward and advocating for our families. We've been, you know, we've been a Team District since the spring. We've reiterated that to our teachers and our faculties and staffs for the last several months. And so we certainly recognize there are features across platforms that different teachers and students prefer. But we have seen Microsoft Teams respond and integrate some additional features now where you can see more faces on camera. So we're hopeful our teachers are seeing that. We've regulated the chat as well at different levels when our teachers have asked to make that more functional. But additionally, we've pushed out all new teacher devices. Those waves started last week. And so many of our teacher struggles, I think, were coming from outdated devices rather than the platform itself. And so that we see the joy on their face when they're picking up those devices has been great. And I believe, once that has happened, I believe that they'll get over the technology, their preference of using Zoom, and will get more familiar with Teams, and will see that their new devices is more than capable of allowing that to happen. We've got tech support on the ground from our instructional tech team that's willing to support our teachers. That's how they use that as well. And I'll point to the family assistance centers one more time. So if we have students with devices that are struggling to connect to Teams, more than likely, they're just struggling to connect to Zoom as well. And so we would ask that they take that, meet us at a technology center. I helped a family yesterday personally log on to Teams, and it was a hotspot issue. It had nothing to do with the Teams platform, but we reset that hotspot, and the little girl and her mother were extremely happy, and she got to go log on to Art yesterday. And it was a highlight of honestly, my month, being able to support a family that way. So we do believe that we've got a lot of different support angles coming a lot of different ways for the Teams versus Zoom feature. But to be clear one more time, MNPS is a Microsoft Teams District, and we will support our families and our teachers in using it well. So anyone that is still struggling with that, a teacher can reach out directly to me or their principal or their executive director. We will connect them to who can help. And our families can certainly go to the help desk. They can call that number. They can go right to one of the six sites Dr. Springer talked about, and please encourage them to do so. So no student should go without instruction because they prefer Zoom over Teams. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. I also had a question that's a little different. I know that a lot of parents and teachers have been really concerned with the ventilation in our schools, especially because our schools are pretty old. And I know one way that we've been working to improve the air quality has been to examine the minimum efficiency reporting value of our filtration systems and increase that value where we can. So could you kind of just give us an update on where we are in this effort to increase our air quality?
Hi, Ms. Taylor, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
You're probably referring to an email that I think that one of your constituents wrote, which was very well-written, by the way. We first and foremost are following the CDC guidelines for ventilation in our facilities during this time, which includes starting up units earlier and running them later during the school days. It also means running the systems throughout the day rather than the automatic on and off that you might see otherwise. The key is, according to CDC, is the air changes per hour, and that's what we're trying to do and flush the systems as much as possible. With regard to filtration systems, we're looking at that, as that particular email indicated. And where it is possible and where it is practical, we're certainly increasing the MIRB value of those facilities. That includes, but we're very confident, very confident that with the air movement in enhanced air ventilation that we're trying to perform in all of our schools, regardless of the age, that we can, by increasing the MIRB as much as possible and practical, we will have some better quality air systems in our facilities when the kids come back.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yeah, I just, I know that one of the other things that the CDC had recommended was opening windows and letting air kind of flow.
Absolutely. And in middle Tennessee, as you well know, we have a thing called humidity. So we try not to overtax our systems by opening windows and doors. We just don't recommend it. And if you do read the CDC guidelines, they do indicate where that is possible, certainly. Dryer climates, it's, you know, such probably Cincinnati and above, if you will, where it tends to be drier at this time of year. You know, certainly that's possible. Here, we have to be very careful so that we don't overtax our HVAC systems and getting the humidity out of the air and potentially, you know, increase air quality issues that we don't want in our buildings with too much moisture. So it's a really balancing act that we do. Now, let me say this. We are, where it is possible, we are increasing that outside air to the limit that we can, where it's possible, and again, where it's practical for the particular system in a particular building.
Okay, great. And I also know that one thing that the CDC really kind of harps on is making sure that you're recycling the air, like that the air has completely...
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have like an amount of time that is an average in our schools that it is before the air is completely new?
Yes, I can get that information for you. It varies, obviously. We've got 160 buildings that, you know, average 49 years, and so they all have different systems. And so that air change rate will be slightly different for each one, but it is the air change rate that you're referring to. And it's per hour. It's so many changes per hour is what ASHRAE, the governing body that develops the codes for our building codes. So I would be glad to get that information for you, but it is going to vary from school to school.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'll let Tyler seed the floor. I appreciate it.
No problem. All right, Ms. Bush?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to go in this order, Dr. Battle, Dr. Bellamy, and Dr. Springer. I'm going to have questions for all three. My first question for Dr. Battle. I don't know if she's there. Is Dr. Battle there? Okay, so with all the data that's circulating around and the metrics, I know parents have been very concerned and questioning where we're getting our metrics, where we're getting our data, and want to know where do we rely on as far as getting the information, as far as the science and the health and wellness of our students. So if you can elaborate just kind of where the data is coming from and what we're relying on as far as making our decisions.
Yes, Ms. Bush, I think this was a, we just had this conversation the other day, so happy to recap it with regards to our metrics. We do receive and follow the metrics that are released by the Health Department on a daily basis. And of course, that data is released publicly to everyone. So they release metrics around the 100 number of cases per 100,000 residents, our positivity rate, our transmission rate, and so... And so all of those metrics are metrics that we pull in, that we follow, that are also really grounded in our Nashville plan with regards to our phased opening. So again, those metrics that the Health Department are releasing are the metrics that we're following as a school district. To your second question about who else is involved in those communications, I'll take us back again to May, actually, when our Nashville Plan Task Force was meeting. If you recall, that team was comprised of leaders from various types of schools. It included health officials. It did include the lead of the city's COVID Task Force as well. So various health officials, as well as Dr. Johanga, as you're aware of, as well as Chief Swan, who is also a member of that task force. And so we started meeting back in May. We had lots of meetings and conversations to ground ourselves in the data. Of course, at that point in time, the task force was already underway in releasing that data. The only metric that has been included since that time is a common metric that has been used across the country with regards to the number of cases per 100,000 residents. That can be a tongue twister sometimes. So that's the only metric that has been added since the release of the Nashville Plan.
Okay, and the reason why I say question, I know we had a great conversation on the metrics and everything, just wanted to make sure that it was public so that everybody else can hear it. That way it could be on record. So thank you for that question. So that's one question I have for you.
All right.
Bellamy next. Hello, Dr. Bellamy, how are you?
I'm wonderful. Yourself?
I'm doing awesome. Okay, as far as the, I want to know where we are as far as the planning or implementation on the literacy with the Florida Virtual Learning.
Yes, ma'am. Could you, could you be a little more specific for me as far as when you say the literacy with FLVS?
Yeah, so I know that virtual learning is going to be utilized pretty much, you know, when we go back into the space phasing in. So I just kind of want to hear the plans around literacy. How are teachers able to also, also make that so much impactful, just as much of the virtual learning? So I just kind of want to kind of hear how that's going to work together.
Absolutely, and Dr. David Williams is on the call with me, with us tonight, so I'm going to kick it to him here in just a second because his department, and I know Aaliyah Washington, our early literacy expert, has sent out guidance to our schools just recently about how balanced literacy fits into FLVS, or actually the other way around, how FLVS fits into our balanced literacy framework approach. And so as we welcome our learners back in the in-person space, I'm going to let Dr. Williams talk a little bit more about how FLVS is integrated into that and a little bit more about your question, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Dr. Bellamy, thank you, and Ms. Bush, good to see you. Thanks for the question. So for our literacy, this will benefit all of our students' grades K through 12, actually, but they will continue to have access to FLVS online, of course, through Schoologee, and that will apply whether they're in person or virtual. We are also ensuring that all students have access to physical copies of their books, and that's important if they're at home learning, of course, that textbook that they have access to will support the virtual learning. But even when they're back in person, they each need to have his or her own individual copy to adhere to CDC safety guidelines, so it's important that every kid has access to the books. And so just as we did in quarter one, we have purchased Cortex for every single kid, and those will also be made available next week to be in school so that, so that families can go through a drive-through and have access to those books. For K2 specifically, we will continue to have our foundational skills program. And so between FLVS, the Cortex, and the foundational skills program for K2 specifically, those three, three things fit together nicely, and again, they, they support our balanced literacy framework approach.
Okay. Dr. Bellamy, do you have anything more to add to it? I don't know if you.
No, ma'am. I think Dr. Williams has covered this in that space very well.
And teachers are also involved, Dr. Williams, I know he just left. So teachers are involved with this whole framework also. So we've included the teachers, and they can, because I know this has changed a whole lot, right? So I just want to make sure, so teachers are having the conversations along with your team, so they're having their.
That was one of the things we decided back in July, was we earmarked some funds to ensure that we had school-based folks being part of the development, the conversation quarter by quarter, and that work continues. So absolutely, and that cuts across all content areas. So certainly literacy, but math, science, social studies, the arts, et cetera. So we certainly have plenty of school-based folks, whether they're coaches or teachers, working as an extension of our central office team to develop the curricular resources we are providing.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question for Dr. Bellamy. I know we have our help centers for the laptops, and so I just want to know if families cannot get to those locations, what are the options for those families?
My first reference point for them would be to call the help desk. It is manned, you know, every business day. I had to call them myself while I was at the help center the other day, as a matter of fact. So because there was a computer issue, I was struggling with helping the family, so I called the help center myself. I had about a three-minute wait before they got to me, and they walked me through how to help the family. Additionally, I know because I made the mistake of accidentally calling the Spanish-language line help center first, that we do offer it in other languages as well and translation assistance. So I would really encourage them to reach out to that help line. They can also reach out directly to their school, their principal, their teacher, and if those folks need to connect them directly to me, I will personally make sure that I get them the support they need, whether it's connecting them with a help center or whether it's someone that I know here on staff that I can have reach out to them to provide them that support as well.
Does that mean it's making some house calls? Because even sometimes at the help desk, they may not can't problem solve, so what is an option?
We certainly have, have worked with our families that need to swap out devices and things like that when they struggle with transportation. I can let Dr. Springer chime in here. Her department is a, one of the blessings of working here in MNPS is the vast resources we have from community partners, and I know Dr. Springer probably has something she's wishing that I would say right now, so I'll certainly let her chime in if she has some additional supports that she would like to make sure our families are aware of.
Wow, you handed her off to me greatly because she was next. Yay.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Bush.
Hi.
Hi. To add to everything that Dr. Bellamy has stated, there have been many, 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 many instances in which we go to the family's home. We will not leave a family without receiving that specialized, personalized support if it means we go to them. So we have social workers that are on deck, ready to support. Our counselors, our teachers, and our school administrators have all gone out to support our families. Just to reiterate what Dr. Bellamy stated, first point of contact is calling that help line. They're unable to assist, they will get you to our team or to another team that will be able to provide that on-demand support. We want no student to experience any disruption in their learning.
Awesome. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I did not add that our transportation department, since before the start of the school year, have been running their routes. They have done tremendous work in delivering not only meals, but devices and resources to our students. So while we do the individual house needs as well, a lot of times, we do leverage our transportation team, and we're very grateful for them and all the work that they've poured in. They are also assisting at our help centers whenever necessary. So again, kudos to them, and a huge thank you to their work as well as Dr. Springer's team.
Yeah, and that's really good to know because, you know, of course, we can still have a lot of parents and families that are struggling, you know, to get to locations and that nature, and because they're working. So it's really good that we have this information and that we can also continue to share. So thank you for that. My last question for you, Dr. Springer, is on our truancy letters, have they been decreased? Because I know they, how many truancy letters were sent out to families? Because I know that we, I know myself, I've gotten concerns from parents saying that, hey, I got this letter, but I haven't had a computer in two or three weeks because I'm waiting on my school to, to exchange it. So how does that look for families who have struggled with, you know, the technology, the, you know, the equipment, that kind of thing? So how are we looking on truancy letters? Have we retracted those letters or those, I wouldn't say threats, but how are we looking as far as that, that space?
Yes, so if I may, I would be remiss, as Dr. Battle would say, if I didn't say, if we have a family who has been unable to log on for two and three weeks, please, please, please call me. Let me know. We will get them the support that they need if they're unable to make it to those help center sites. We don't want that to happen at all. So that's first thing. If we have students who have five or more absences, then a few weeks back, maybe they received a truancy letter. So about 6,649 letters did go out, to answer your question. Since then, we have definitely increased our level of support and outreach to our students. We want to find each and every last one of them. We do know that some of our students have been dropped in enrollment, maybe transferred to another district, moved out of the country, and are no longer on the truancy list. But please know that there are efforts that are in place to reach out to those students, investigate why those five absences or more are on their record, and to provide those ongoing supports. We want to remove those barriers. We recognize this is a different year, and we want to really, truly, those letters are intended to advise, to communicate, but more importantly, to make sure that our families know we are here. Call the school, get some support. If you've been unable to log in, when you call that school, we will address those absences, absolutely. Those absences, if you've been unable to log in or you've had any barriers related to the pandemic, will definitely be excused absences. So those will be corrected. So we encourage our families in shorts to call their schools so that those absences can be corrected. I know myself, I have reached out to multiple principals while serving at some of our help sites. You'll have students to show up and say, hey, I've just struggled, right? And I almost gave up, but you all have these help centers, and I thought I'd give it one more try. And so what I do is notify those principals immediately of the student's name, the days that they've been absent, please care for these absences and wraparound layers of support. We also have collaborative referral process that we begin to implement and to our help centers. So when we have students who are just logging in for the first time after we get over that pain in our heart, right? We want our kids engaged. We definitely make sure we submit that information and that documentation so that it's documented so we can quickly get them the interventions that they need academically, socially, and make sure their absences are corrected. So these help centers, again, have helped us to find like three, over 3,000 families. 3,000 more students have logged on over the last three weeks, and that truly is what it's really, really all about, and we'll stop at nothing until we get to them all, get to them all.
Thank you for that. And once these, once we resolve the absences of our students, are the truancy letters stayed on, are they a part of their record? How does it look for a student?
The truancy letter is truly just a notice. It is a notice to inform our parents. If they're not unaware, they may be unaware that they have X amount of absences. And so it's just an alert to let them know that those absences exist, and here are the contacts that you need to call to make sure that we get those rectified. So that's truly the process for those letters. It is just a notification.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for making part of a record because that's what they wanted to know. So thank you so much. I have one more question, and I promise I'm done. This is going back to Dr. Battle.
Ms. Bush, one clarification. You asked if it was part of a record. Of course, when we send out the notification, it is, it is, you know, a student is identified, right? So the letters are personalized, it has a student's name, right? So there is a record of the attendance letter, but it is not a flag that is, if there's a flag, it's because we know we need a layer on support. It isn't a flag to say that, hey, this student, you know, that there's a problem here. It's a flag to say, hey, let's go ahead and support this student, wrap around the level of support that we know exists. So I just wanted to make sure I clarify that for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Battle, and I'll be done. Hello again. I've sent an email about transportation. You know, we were talking about safety. I sent something over about the concerns of the bus drivers and how the phase-in approach is going to work for them. Can you just kind of, I know Ken, I think I sent it to him also. I'm not sure you want him to chime in as far as how that process will work for those bus drivers and getting the communication out to them.
Yes, and Ken is the expert here, so I'm going to kick it over to him to help update us around some of the questions you have posed.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Bush.
Good evening.
You sent a number of questions. Are there some you want me to focus on or?
So you got the email I sent today, right? It was really well put together by bus drivers that had questions, concerns, and issues. So I guess the main thing, what I summed up was bus driver's safety, trainings, and student safety. So this is some of the. Okay, so can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, so I want to go back to bus driver's safety, so I kind of summed up three things from the email I sent to you earlier. Bus driver's safety, trainings, and student safety. So that's what bus drivers are wanting, more information, support on how we, how it looks for them as we go through this phase-in approach.
Sure, okay. Let me, let me try to tackle all of that. So the, with the bus drivers, we've provided them all with masks. We've been undergoing an ongoing training program. We, we do that over time, and we'll continue to do that as we go along. We've provided them with masks and the other products that they need to clean the bus. From the student perspective, the, we're doing a couple of things on the bus. We're not letting anybody sit in the row of seats immediately behind the driver to create some additional space between the driver and the, and the students. Typically, at the lower grades, we will route at three to a seat for K2 in that range. We're limiting the seat loading to two per seat. You know, that part of that is a, just the practical reality of the fleet size and the number of people we have to transport. So to the extent possible, when we have buses that are running not quite so full, you know, we, we've developed a lot of our plans and procedures in advance of getting the parents' survey back about the preference. So as those numbers come back, it looks like we may have a little bit extra space, and that will allow for drivers to create additional distancing on the bus per the guidelines from CDC and some of the national organizations. When the weather permits, we'll ask the drivers and students to travel with the windows down to the extent possible. That's not always possible when we can. That's, that's certainly our intent to do that. I think we're going to be doing additional disinfecting beyond what the normal cleaning that we do, just to kind of give you some background. And this is a longstanding historical practice, is the bus drivers are paid extra time every morning and every afternoon to what is called pre-trip and post-trip their bus, and that is cleaning of the bus. So as we're entering into the COVID space with students, we're adding some additional steps to that process. So between each, what we call a run, so a bus typically runs a high school run, a middle school run, or high school run, an elementary run, and then a middle school run. Between each of those runs, the driver will walk back through the bus, wipe off the high contact spots, the handrails, the grab points for students, and the tops and backs of the seats where people typically touch as they, as they walk down the aisle. Then after they finish their morning runs, and again, after they finish their afternoon runs, we're having them do a more detailed wipe down of the, of all of the seats and those, those touch points again, to make sure the bus is getting extra sanitized. We do know that's more effort, and we're expecting that we're going to incur some more labor costs as a result of that, as it takes them more time to do it. So we're fully expecting them to charge us the time that it takes to do that. I should also mention that we have acquired a number, gosh, I think I, the number I saw with, to start was about 50,000 masks that will be distributed to drivers that they can hand to students if they get on the bus without a mask. We're hoping that we don't need a lot of those. The kids will come with their masks, but we'll be prepared if they don't. I think I got the vast majority of your questions in there, but if there's one I missed, let me know.
So when will they have this, when will they have this training? I mean, they haven't, as you saw earlier, they, they haven't been communicating the process and procedures of the, of what they need to be doing as you're explaining all this, so.
Yes, so we're still working through getting to all of them, but we've done training sessions with a number of the staff. So as we made the change, oh, gosh, I guess it's been about three weeks ago when we went from delivering meals every day to delivering. when we went from delivering meals every day to delivering meals three days a week. That freed up some time, and we're using those Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're, we're putting, we're doing some training on those days in addition to where the drivers are helping us out on some of the other key things. But we have an ongoing training program with them.
Okay, um, my, my, I think my last question is going to be, let's say, for example, we have a child that, and I didn't hear you say the thermometer checks? Are they going to be doing thermometer checks as the child get on the bus, or?
No, ma'am. We're doing a little bit of that right now with the special needs students because they are super high risk. But with the remainder of the students, we're following the same protocol that we are with school buildings. We're asking parents to self-check the students before they send them either to the bus stop or to the school. And if the child is sick or has a temperature, to keep, to keep them home. We went through a number of considerations, looking at, you know, where do we check temperature and those kind of things. And we're, at this point, we're just not doing that.
So that, that could be a little bit of a risk. Because, you know, with my, with my childcare academy, that's one of the things that's highly recommended is when a child walks through the door, we do a temperature check. And we have caught several kids that have come with fevers, so we have to...
Right. I thought you went...
Sorry, that kind of poses a little bit of a concern that they're having because if they have children that may have fever, they may... Parents didn't do the self-check. So how does that look in, I mean, because if you get the child to school, and, and they do the thermometer checks when they get to school, right? That's when it's going to happen when they get off the bus? They're not going to do the temperature checks then?
We're not going to universally screen students either at the bus or at school with the, the temperature checks. We will do spot checks. We will ask the, the questions. I think Dr. Bellamy addressed this a little earlier, but... And if a student is showing symptoms or they don't answer the questions properly, then we'll be prepared to do some kind of spot check screening. But the plan is not to, to temperature screen every student at the bus or at the school door.
I think that's a dangerous game we're playing by not doing temperature checks even when they get off the bus. So we need to be really prepared because we have K through, K through two students that are going to be transitioning back in, and they not, they may not be able to understand those questions. So I would just recommend that we kind of take a, revisit that as far as, because we've seen other counties doing it too, that they precaution-wise, soon as the child get off the bus, they, they do temperature checks.
Yeah, so I think that part of what we've seen as we've reviewed the literature and we've watched other folks experience as they've gone through this, and, and the guidance that we've seen is that particularly with children, they, they tend to be largely asymptomatic, and that the temperature checks, you know, all of the, the schools around us that have opened and reclosed and opened and reclosed all had temperature check processes in place, or many of them did. And those temperature check processes aren't, they're not effective in actually catching people that may be, particularly the younger children that are most typically asymptomatic. So it's, you know, there's a kind of, not a, it's whether doing the temperature screening on a mass scale like that creates greater risk by having people stand in line or the, on the bus corner van to ask parents to do it and then spot check when symptoms present.
Well, we're also going to have seventh and eighth graders. Eventually, the, the high school is returned back in January. So I just cautioned us of not doing those temperature checks. I do know that it does work. It is very effective to catch those, those, those early signs. So I just wanted to make that, that comment. But thank you, that's all my questions.
Sure. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. All right, Ms. Elrod?
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Don't go anywhere. So, Mr. Stark, I guess I'll start with my follow-up to that on the temperature checks. So I want to make sure that I understand our process correctly. So the thought is, is as Dr. Bellamy said, we're going to have people out there welcoming our students like we always would and creating conversation and relationships with students. And within that, they're going to be asking them the, for me at least, it's become kind of a usual conversation of, have you been around anybody and some other phrases? And if those answers are not, we'll say, comfortable, then they could, that's a pre-screen in essence. And then from there, we could screen them with a temperature check.
Exactly. So for example, you walked in and I said, how are you feeling today? How's your temperature, how was your temperature check at home? And you say, oh, we, we, mom didn't do it today. Hey, why don't you go visit the nurse, and we'll get that done real quick?
Okay, okay. So if teach, if schools chose to, for whatever reason, to implement a temperature check for their entire school, do they have the ability to do so if that's how they want to use their morning meeting time?
Ken, I'm, I'm, I'll be happy to jump in here if that's okay with you.
That, I'm great with that.
Wonderful. So thank you for the question, Ms. Elrod. We've had a lot of discussion around this as we look at the science of what's best for our students and why we try to balance. We don't want to have situations where an asymptomatic child gets through or a situation where we quarantine an entire school when it wasn't needed. And there's a great risk of false positives with temperatures as well. And so without going into the science too much, Dr. Springer's department has weighed in with the health experts, and we've crafted the policy that you've heard about. So to your question, we have given our schools guidance as of now that they should not be mass screening for temperatures. They do, they will receive thermometers at the rate of one to every 40 students, is my understanding. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Right.
So there will be enough in the school to any, any sort of flag that pops up for a teacher, a parapro, anyone that comes in contact with the kids, not just at arrival. It could happen after lunch, and the kid say, I'm not feeling well right now. And we would say, you know what? Let's go ahead and implement the screening now. And so we are going to, I, I work with my EDs every single Friday, and we are finalizing memos to get out to principals this Friday that will put in writing more of the guidance you're asking about right now that will really clarify for our schools where they can draw the line and, and when they can decide this student needs to be screened. But we have not given them a green light to make the choice to mass screen for temperature their students right now.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so my next question is probably for Dr. Springer. So we have really created some newer things to try to fit this virtual life for our, our families and children. So some of them have been the navigators, and some of them have been, at which you spoke to. And then, of course, some of them have also been the virtual after-school clubs. Two of my boys are part of that 400 group of students. We are a part of the Lego Club and big fans of that over here. So, and the Nature Club too, by the way. Shout out to Lego Club and Nature Club. So those two groups and those two clubs, navigator and the virtual school, I think are very good things that we provide from MMPS and are a maybe unexpected consequence of the pandemic and hopefully something that we can continue because I think it's a more equitable option for a lot of our students. And it highlights the abilities of the teachers outside of our own school group. For example, for my two children of the 400, of course, both of the teachers that have or that are hosting those clubs are not within their own school. So what is the likelihood that we'll be able to continue virtual after-school clubs, not just this year, but in the future, and the navigators?
Oh, Ms. Elrod, thank you for your question. I'm, I'm excited about that question. We fully intend to expand these programs beyond post-COVID, if there is such a thing. So specifically for the navigators, this really is about success planning for the long haul. So not just for this year. We really, our, our ultimate vision is for students to have this one navigator to travel and, and follow them and be, be their navigator throughout their span in middle school. Or if it's in high school, throughout their span in high school. So they all keep that same navigator over the course of the year. So that's our, our ultimate goal. So we, we, we're in it for the long haul for navigators. As it relates to our virtual clubs, I think we're on to something. That began last spring where we implemented our virtual clubs, and it was a success, and we're seeing it even now, picking up speed. I mean, we don't intend to end those virtual clubs anytime soon. So duly noted. And I'll take that back to our team, our extended learning team, so that we can continue to plan around those possibilities.
Okay, and are there, so as you know, part of what we like to ask on the board floor is what do you need from us? To continue these navigators and to continue these virtual school clubs, do we have an idea of what's the potential budget request or needs for that?
Well, I'll speak to the needs. So with navigators, I mentioned that there were 600 collaborative referrals that were made already this year. Like, that's a, that's a big deal, right? Across our, our schools. What we are doing is making sure that we're leveraging our partners and our support for schools to be able to provide those supports and needs that have been identified. So if it were mentoring that has been identified as a need, that we have community partners standing ready to provide that need. If there were outside service providers for mental health support, that there are providers ready for that as well. So in terms of support, that is your continued advocacy and really leveraging those partnerships, connecting us with those that you know do this type of work so that we can make sure that we meet those needs that we are identifying. The nice thing is, it's, even at the district level, we can drill down and identify those specific students. So, and identify those specific supports that are being applied for those students. So it, it really will take just the community partnering with the schools to make sure that we have the appropriate resources, and I am certain that we will, to meet the needs of those students. Big picture planning, we talked about success and advocacy centers for our elementary school students. Just thinking about advocacy in that way. If we had a success center or an advocacy center at each and every elementary school, we will be able to do some early interventions for our students, set them up nicely for this practice that they will engage in at the middle school level. You know, that's where we practice becoming adults and our young adults. And then by the time we get to high school, we begin to embed those practices. And so we want to make sure that we set them up nicely for success. So your continued advocacy, just providing those social, emotional learning supports and leveraging the community is what we need.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I, again, we personally really enjoy them, and we've been really pushing those virtual after-school clubs to not only our teachers, but our friends and our groups of whoever we can tell. We're like, hey, I don't know if you know if this is available, but it's been a really wonderful experience. And I do hope that for us as a board that we prioritize that. And as a school system, I think it's, I just think it's a really great, unexpected thing that we've created, and we should continue. So I appreciate that work. And I know, I see other people popping up their screens. I'm sorry, guys, I got more questions. So hold on, I think, okay.
That's it, that's all I have for you, Dr. Springer, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So for my next questions, my next questions are probably going to be Mr. Henson, Mr. North, and maybe Dr. Battle. So I appreciate the enrollment information. As y'all are aware, I sent an email about a lot of those questions, and y'all responded. So my first question I have to this is, can we please get a copy of this report to go along with that email so we have all those graphs about enrollment information?
A copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay, I was going to clarify that as well. Yes, the PowerPoint presentation. You should have received the enrollment numbers, I think, about a week or two ago, but we can send it all back. We can do it.
Did we get that, I'm so sorry, I missed that graph.
You, we just summarize in the graph what those pages of documents say it, but we...
Maybe I just really like it.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Okay. The graphs were, I looked at those numbers, and I, of course, looked at the personal email I got back. But the graph was incredibly helpful. So on that note, here are some follow, here are some of my follow-up questions. So I understand that we are hoping that the BEP Review Committee is going to agree to hold districts harmless in their enrollment declines in anticipation of enrollment rebounding for next year. But the state BEP Review Committee doesn't have that power. That's a, a request that they would have of the legislature. Unless there is a difference of, unless there's, yeah, they're not able to hold us harmless unless they agree, unless, unless the legislator has given Commissioner Schwinn the ability and the authority to make that determination. So I guess that's the Mark North question. Is there, has there been a change within the structure of the BEP Review Committee to allow Commissioner Schwinn to do that? Or is it the BEP Review Committee will give that suggestion to the legislator, legislation, legislature, excuse me, and we just hope that they agree?
I'll jump in and try to answer that, Ms. Elrod. I'm a member of the state BEP Review Committee and have been for a number of years. And as you said, BEP, Board of Education, and the BEP Review Committee is mandated by state statute to submit recommendations to both branches of the state legislature as well as to the governor. And that was, and I shouldn't say that, I'll go ahead and say it again. The recommendation to hold school districts harmless for declining enrollment in this school year, which would affect next fiscal year's state BEP funding, is the top priority recommendation this year of the state BEP Review Committee. It also is the top priority recommendation for the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, or TOS. And the process would be that the, the governor and/or the state legislature would need to include funding in the next year's state budget for that purpose. And so it would be a part of the state budget process to include that funding in the state budget to hold school districts harmless for the declining enrollment that would occur, that is occurring this year, again, for almost all school districts across the state. Again, anticipating a rebound in student enrollment for next year when hopefully we're more back to normal.
Okay, so it would still require the legislature, when they come back in January and through that voting process, through session, to, to agree to hold us harmless?
It would require that to be included in the state budget that the state legislature would pass.
Okay. I mean, I, I would like for that to happen. Historically, I don't have an incredible amount of faith in that happening. So if that doesn't happen, what are we looking at as a financial impact? Like, if we have 3,000, and, let me make sure I have this email correct, 3,516 students down for enrollment currently, at our price per pupil, that's like $11,000 per pupil, are we looking at like a $40 million impact?
No, because if we were to only look at state BEP funding, which this year, our projected state BEP funding is approximately $282 million. So it would only affect state funding, state BEP funding. And the formula itself is very dynamic in that there are different components and factors in the formula that change each year. So it's virtually impossible for individual school, school districts to project what the next year's funding level might be because so many of the, the factors are interrelated regarding what other school districts might, their, what they might have, as well as the fiscal capacity index, which is recalculated each year. And so if we were to strictly look at the, the state BEP funding that we have this year, and if we were to apply a percentage reduction equal to the reduction in enrollment that we have seen through Day 30, that would equate to approximately $11 million. One thing that I do want to point out is that the state BEP funding is much more heavily weighted on student enrollment in the second semester. And so the first semester, the weight is, is around 30%. The second semester, the weight is around 70%. And so it's obviously much more heavily weighted in the second semester. And so these Day 30 numbers really wouldn't have much of an impact until we know what the enrollment numbers are going to be in Months 6 and 7, which are in the second semester.
Okay, okay. I guess my, what I'm hoping that we will continue to keep an eye on is what that potential impact is going to be in preparation of us not having school districts across the state, though I really do hope that happens, held harmless in that. I want it to happen, but because of the continued lack of funding that the state is having and just the historical lack of BEP funding, I mean, we're in litigation right now on that. for the, for MMPS, I want to make sure that we are staying on top of that as a board. It's a part of our good governance, just to make sure, not only as a budget committee, but us as individual board members, that we're aware of how that enrollment not only impacts us now for that 30-day mark, but continuing even through next, the end of the year for that second semester, and how that's gonna potentially affect us in the following year, since that's how our funding happens within the state. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, and totally agree on that advocacy aspect.
Okay. And, um, yes, okay. Copy of your estimate. So sorry, I'm trying to make sure I've asked all of my questions really quickly before I turn it over, because I know we're all in line. Okay, that's what I have right now, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elrod, Mr. Henson. All right, I have Ms. Masters and then Dr. Nabah McKenney.
Thank you so much. So I just, I have some questions about masks. So when it was released on Friday that there will, will be the opportunity to request medical exemptions around masks, I got a lot of concern and questions from constituents here in District 3, wondering what will constitute a medical exemption? Will my student be in class with unmasked students or staff? Will my student interact with staff who work with unmasked students? And will there be an opportunity for those who responded to the survey that they are requesting in-person learning to change their mind because of now having the knowledge that there may be some in the building who are not wearing masks? And I know that was a long string of questions, but Mason Bellamy and I had a conversation about this the other day, so I think he knows that, that these questions were gonna come from me during the meeting today.
Ms. Masters, I am here, and I appreciate your conversation, but you can see Dr. Springer has popped on, and that tells me she is eager to tackle your questions, and so I'm gonna let her do that.
Why, certainly, Dr. Bellamy, good, good evening. To answer your question, MMPS recognizes that some students may have disabilities, medical conditions, or mental health conditions for which face mask covering may cause either harm or need to be reasonably accommodated. But the expectation is that all of our students will wear a mask. In the event that any of those circumstances that I just mentioned arise, a modification would be requested in a formal, through a formal process. And the process is that the family would make the request, submit documentation from an actual board-certified medical provider with documented accommodations that they are suggesting. Once those forms are submitted to our schools, then our schools will convene a team who will review the request and make those reasonable accommodations. So some of those examples of some reasonable accommodations would be students wearing a clear face mask, I mean, excuse me, a clear face shield that would be worn. Students would be assigned in special seating arrangement that is respectful of the students' and teachers' safety. They will be socially distant with not, with an effort not to isolate. So we don't want to isolate our students, but we want to make sure that they are socially distanced, if this is indeed the case. Some students may elect to receive instruction virtually through remote learning, once they visited their doctor and then received consultation, and that also is an option as well. So to recap, a student, a family would make a recommendation formally through the school, and that recommendation would accompany a doctor's documentation. And then after that, a team will convene, identify those accommodations that would be in place that I just reviewed, individuals that, you know, teach the student or would have touchpoints with the student, the administration, counselors, teachers, related service providers, thinking about all the people that may touchpoint with the student, bus drivers, office staff, cafeteria staff, substitutes, would all receive information about this accommodation so that they also are aware and are able to maintain safety as well. A copy of this will be documented in the students' key folders of the student transition to another school. This documentation will be on hand. There also will be a medical alert that is alerted, added to their infinite campus database, so that everyone is aware of this accommodation. But again, I want to highlight that the expectation is for all students to have face coverings as they enter our buildings, except for, may I add, while a student is eating or drinking, a student who, again, cannot medically tolerate wearing a face mask, and lastly, at the direction of MMPS staff. Those would be the only exceptions. As it relates to, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Dr. Springer, this is Melissa. I wanted to just jump in quickly and add that under Title II of the ADA and Section 504 of the Rehab Act, MMPS has an obligation, an affirmative obligation to accommodate the medical needs of its students. And to answer, I believe, one of the last questions about would parents be informed proactively if their student would be in class with another student who may not be able to wear a mask, they would not be informed of that because under FERPA, the medical requests would be an educational record, and that could not be shared under those circumstances. So I just wanted to provide that legal context for this discussion.
That is very helpful. Could you clarify, under those circumstances, exactly what sorts of measures will be taken to ensure the safety of the other students and staff in the classroom with the student who's not able to wear a mask?
Yes, it's a-
Go ahead, Dr. Springer, I'll just say a lot will be case-by-case specific. For example, students who can wear a face shield may be treated differently than students who can't tolerate any face covering at all.
Agreed. And to add to that, you know, inability to socially distance, so really arranging seats so that they are able to maintain the recommended distance between the student and others within the classroom, again, paying special attention to not isolate the student.
Okay. And, and then I'm wondering, could you speak to, you know, should a student begin in-person learning and realize that they are not comfortable with the safety measures in place and, and want to switch back to virtual learning, what will be the, the process for that? You know, to ensure that everyone who is in the building is actually feeling comfortable with what they're facing, dare you say?
I'm happy to respond to that question, Ms. Masters. As you know, our preference survey closed on Friday. We are allowing for, outside of, you know, a, a medical reason, that if a family chooses to switch their preference, they'll have the opportunity to do that in December prior to the start of the second semester. And so that's why we're allowing that flexibility. If a parent or student needs to make that adjustment, that's the time that we will adjust, unless, of course, there's an extenuating circumstance that would be medically documented that would call for a student to make that transition sooner.
So should a, should a student begin in-person and just be experiencing, say, even just extreme anxiety over realizing, wow, there are more students in here than I expected, you know, wow, this is, this is pretty overwhelming, considering that we are still in the midst of a pandemic, that we would be able to, to accommodate that? Just, just a realization on the part of a family that they made the wrong choice and really want to go back to virtual?
Yeah, again, that's why we even extended the preference survey, allowing parents, you know, as they were considering even the information to make that shift. We needed that preference survey so that we could fully prepare our teams, our staff, for students who are gonna be in-person or virtual. So outside of a, you know, medical reason or an extenuating educational need, the preferences that have been determined are the preferences, at least until we get to that option, opportunity to switch going into the second semester. So it is, we, we definitely need to, when it comes to the protocols and the expectations for our students, our team is going to go through extreme efforts in getting all of the PPE requirements and social distancing in place, cohorting students, so it's important that we establish some consistency to the best of our ability with regards to the preferences chosen by families. But again, to your very point, while, you know, the, the decision could have been that the decision now will be the decision for the rest of the school year, we want to be flexible, we want to be understanding that, given the amount of time from fall break to December, if a family did make a decision to switch options and structures for learning, that they could do that at that time. And we would accommodate that, that, we would accommodate that option of switching from in-person or virtual at that preference servants, survey opportunity in December.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have quite a few families who were concerned because they had already returned their survey response before they learned on Friday that there would be mask exemptions. So that sort of changed, potentially changed the way they would have liked to respond to the survey, even though they had already responded at that point. And then also, just sort of the understanding that you can't, although I understand all kinds of precautions are being taken and, and all sorts of safety measures are being put in place, there's then gonna be the reality of, of what it looks like day-to-day and whether or not families find, wow, I made the wrong choice. I wish I'd chosen virtual, this is really overwhelming.
Yeah, and that's why we did try to push out as much information as we did, understanding that, you know, school, the way that the structure worked this time last year would be much different this school year. It's also why we extended the survey, allowing for, if this family did make a decision early on in the preference survey window, they did have an opportunity to reach out to us, and we would switch that preference in, in our system. And I do also want to note that, you know, when we think about aligning this to the executive order that we have for our city, our process goes far beyond the executive order to ensure that if a student, for any reason, has an exemption from the mask, that it is medically documented and there is, you know, true reason for a student to be exempt from a mask. And we also have to remember that exemption from a mask doesn't mean exemption from a face shield, it doesn't mean exemption from social distancing and other measures that will be put in place. And I think there are some, sometimes assumptions that when you say exemption from mask, it means not any face covering. It does not mean that. It means that we're looking for appropriate face coverings in some scenarios for students based upon whatever challenge they may, may be experiencing. And so that's just one point of clarification, that we might have an exemption from a mask, but it, it may not exempt a student from a face shield, and that's kind of the next level of support that we will be exploring.
Okay. Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
All right, Dr. Nabah McKen, or Mrs. Masters, was that it for you?
I think that's it for now. Thanks.
No problem, tag back in if you'd like. All right, Dr. Bethina Nabah McKenney?
Hi, can you hear me? Awesome. Thank you. I have a few questions. I think these, a couple of questions that will go to Dr. Bellamy and Dr. Williams, a couple for Dr. Springer and one for Dr. Battle, I believe. Starting with Dr. Bellamy, Dr. Williams, if you could help me with this. I, I know it's been indicated that our high school students won't return until January for that phased-in learning approach, but I've had a lot of concern around support needed for high school students in that, in that virtual learning. Can you talk a little bit about what type of support we're going to provide, or we can provide, for students who are struggling with academic courses around those core subjects or around any subjects to help support learning in, into the second semester?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be Mason, Mason Bellamy here. Thank you for the question, and I'd be happy to answer it. My high school directors and myself have been working pretty heavily on that the last month or so, honestly. As we were closing up August, you know, it's still kind of in the beginning stages of virtual learning starting, and we were still seeing our, our high school students settling in to getting accustomed to checking in virtually and their course load. And then, of course, we made the announcement of when they would come back. And since then, we've seen a lot of students accessing supports at higher rates than they were previously, because, you know, they're on a four-by-four block for the most part, and that first semester is coming to a close very quickly for them here at the fall break. So we are excited that the high school directors met with a core group of high school principals starting two weeks ago, and really brainstormed what had been working for them in the past and in this virtual setting. And we have got, it went out earlier today, not a directive, but a memo to our high schools as to the kind of things we want to see them trying, using the PLN time, offering the office hours, and we will begin in, in certain places where we're able to, possibly even connecting in-person on a one-to-one basis for students. That is not to say that we are certainly not opening up the doors where we're holding to the, the phased-in timeline like you've heard, but the bottom line is, much like you've heard Dr. Springer say, we want to find the students that are struggling, they are doing course audits, and Dr. Springer can chime in if, if, if I don't get this right. But our lead counselor, Megan Cousin-Lark, is working with our counselors to do senior audits across the board. They've been doing that the last couple of weeks to identify our seniors that might be deficient of credit or might be struggling right now as part of those audits, and plug them in to supports one-on-one, whether virtually or whether we start looking after fall break, whether or not we're able to, to find students that really do need to come during that PLN time that is normally embedded into their day, and, and figure out how we connect them with the resources they need for their teachers. So we got a lot of creative approaches going on, and I'd be happy to follow up more with you if you want to know more about any, any one of those or which schools are, are working which, which way with that. Our high school directors are gathering all that information as we speak so that we can continue to rally support around those schools from my level.
Thank you. Dr. Bellamy, I know what, I personally know what PLN time is, but can you kind of explain for everyone what that stands for?
Sure. And you, you've caught me off guard because we called it something different two months ago in my previous district, so I'm gonna let David or someone chime in as to what the acronym means. But what I can tell you happens during the day is during that day, it's a block of time where students are getting the interventions they need so that they can continue to make progress in their academic areas. And so typically, a lot of times, that's devoted to students who might need a tier-specific or a skill-specific intervention during their day. But we are focusing on students that are struggling right now in the personalized learning time. It, it hit me, I knew it was gonna hit me sooner or later, but in the personalized learning time, we will be connecting them to, to supports in their school during that day. Maybe they look a little different than they typically get through that time. So again, during a typical school year, it's, obviously, we're all in-person, and students may be traveling all across the school to get skill-specific interventions. While those skill-specific interventions are still happening, we are going a step further and looking at any student that might need support and seeing how we can use that time to make sure that we're not losing those precious credits that our high school seniors and all high school students need so desperately.
Okay. Thank you. And then as a follow-up to that, there has been some concern related to grading and what grading looks like when you have students who have not, at this point, signed in or participated in the synchronous and asynchronous learning, or they've gotten behind in that. Can you talk a little bit about how we are handling this upcoming nine-week grading period for students and how are we supporting them moving forward?
So the first thing we're doing is we're trying to be proactive as possible, and rather than, just like we would in a normal year. So I don't mean to call attention to it in a way that we don't typically do. In a normal year, we are looking at progress reports, we are looking at daily grade books, and our schools have structures in place so that our administrators can see which students are struggling, maybe failing a course, and, and ask teachers how we can help and plug in support. So we're, we're trying to be even more proactive than normal by using the data Dr. Springer's office provides of who's logged in and who hasn't, by aligning that with our teacher grade books, and teachers reporting to their principals in a variety of different ways, who might be failing, who might be struggling, who's not logging in, and wrapping that all around the premise of the work that's been done over the previous two or three years in grading for student success, right? Grading should be indicative of a student's progress and not indicative of a punishment we've given them because they didn't engage in a certain behavior that we wanted to see necessarily, right? So we, we try to grade from that student-centered perspective where we're grading their mastery of the content, and so missing one synchronous session should not hurt your grade poorly and, or badly enough that you can't recover from that, especially when we're on a blocked schedule. So the proactive supports tied into what we've been doing for years in Metro Nashville of grading for, for student mastery. And I'll let Dr. Williams chime in if there's anything to add from that, the philosophy as that goes, because I'm, I'm probably not as well-versed in that work since it was going on for years before my arrival, as far as that goes. But did that address your question?
Well, yes, and, and just a follow-up to that is, we, I just want to make sure that, that our, that our public understands that, that, I, I know in the spring when we had the asynchronous learning that was taking place- learning that was taking place, grades were not given out to students, but as we move into the fall, students will receive academic grades for learning. So just wanted to kind of emphasize on that, that students are receiving grades and what type of support are we helping those students who are struggling in that, in that area around that? And just want to make sure that that emphasis, because I think it's still a little murky about whether students will receive grades and how those grades will affect them moving forward at, at all tiers, but especially in high school where they're earning high school credits.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate your advocacy around that issue and to tie it into a question Ms. Elrod asked earlier, what can the board advocate for? Help us get that message out. I think we have been as clear as we can be in communicating time and time again, but sometimes students don't believe it until they see it or they didn't hear the message. But you're absolutely right. Grading, you know, engaging in those classes, it's just like if school were in session in-person right now and a student who does not earn that credit at the high school level, you know, that, that does have very negative consequences to, to progressing through the grades appropriately and, and reaching that graduation stage that we all hope we're at a place where we can walk across and shake hands again in, you know, in, in the near future. And so we appreciate you calling attention to that. In addition, we're going to utilize supports we've always had. If a student fails a class and misses a credit, we will have credit recovery options during that personalized learning time, which I realize now I call it PLN time, I believe, and it's PLT time. PLN is our principal learning network, I believe. It's, it's our principal meeting each month, so I'm getting my acronyms straight sooner or later, I promise. But during that PLT time, they will have credit recovery opportunities as well, which we don't typically, we don't typically use PLT time for that, but in this system and this year, we are going to utilize that time and we're going to identify the kid's biggest need and, and obviously comply with, with RTI and what we need to do there, but also make sure we put in front of every student their greatest need with the image of keeping them on track, which again is where Dr. Springer's department has been a great, great partner. And hearing Dr. Cusson-Lark talk about what they are doing to, for senior audits to make sure our seniors who are closest to that finish line stay on track. So thank you again for pointing that out and clarifying once and for all for everyone listening again, that grades are, are being taken, that the end of the nine weeks, the credits will be earned in high school. And, and certainly if, if we did not get those credits earned, we, we will have to look at, at making those credits up at a later date and, and whatever way we can support that.
And just to clarify, credits are at the end of the semester and not the nine weeks, correct?
That is correct, but our high schools are on a four-by-four system. So the end of their semester is the end of this nine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, any class of four-by-four, that's an important distinction.
Absolutely. And then I have another, oh yeah, it is. So since they're on a four-by-four schedule, this is a half-credit or is it a whole-credit?
They will earn a whole-credit between now and the end of the term in December. So at, at the October break.
October, we'll have a half-credit.
That is correct.
All right. Just to clarify that. And then I have another question. So I know that, and, and this may be a question to Dr. Springer maybe or so, but I know that McGavick is, has the largest student population, the McGavick cluster has the largest student population, and I noticed that we have a decrease in enrollment by 596 students. Percentage, that's, that percentile seems kind of low because of the number of students compared to the amount that we're losing, but do we have a breakdown in the tiers related to how, where the, where we're losing those students? Is it elementary, middle and high that we're losing that, that population of students from the 2019, 20 to the 2021 school year?
I, I'm not sure if, if Chief Henson or Chief Henson has a statistic available right offhand, but I'll have to kick it to, to him to, to see where we're at.
I, I don't have that right here in front of me, but we do have that information. We have, we have that information, of course, broken down by each school. And so we can organize it by cluster and then into the, the different grade bands or tiers. We can get that to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And then I have another question around our, and, and I don't know who this would be directed to, related to our, our isolation rooms for students who may potentially display symptoms around COVID. I know within each school, they're being asked to, to have a separate room for those students who display symptoms related to COVID, separate from the clinics that are within the classrooms. Have we determined who will monitor those? Will they be our school nurses that will monitor those or will someone within the staff? How is that determined?
I'm, I'm happy to address that. And Dr. Springer, this was kind of worked out in conjunction between Dr. Springer's department and Dr. Boyle, who works with Dr. Springer, and then the super, obviously it rests in the schools, which will work, my EDs and I will work with that guidance. So right now, as we're trying to staff every building with its own nurse, we were certainly going to have to provide supervision for the children in that room. And it will, the, the short answer is it'll work in tandem. It may oftentimes be the nurse. It may oftentimes have to be someone else at the school level, depending on what the nurse is doing in that moment. You know, lots of our nurses have to, to provide insulin to students and do other treatments during the day. And we obviously can't leave small students unattended, even in an isolating, a quarantine room in that sense. So there's going to be a, a group effort, but you will see probably a variety of, of people at each school, depending on what their office support staff looks like and depending on the availability of the nurse.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one final question that came back to, that, that I meant to ask around academics. I know I, I'm really excited to see about the, the attendance data that we have of students participating, but have we kind of looked at the percentage of students that, that are logging in versus the percentage of students that are actually completing their synchronous and asynchronous learning that are showing up to classes and completing the amount of work? Have we, have we kind of looked at the, the difference in those ratios?
So I, I will let Dr. Springer chime in from her department. I can tell you for my department, we do get updates from Mr. Redmond, who works for Dr. Springer, and it tells us the amount of unique logins. And we certainly look at that and then we use our grade books. The, the conversation you and I had a minute ago about grading is often how we're judging the students that are actively engaging versus just logging in so they can check that box, right? So we have said to be, to be in attendance, you have to have logged in, but for your grades, you have to have completed the work. And so when we, when we look, our, our grades and our progress reporting mechanisms compared to that is what's really going to tell us that story. So we, we're certainly tracking both. I don't have the data to look at you right now and tell you specifically, school by school, to what percent that drops off. Obviously, we have some students that, that might not be engaging as much as we want, which we also have in a traditional in-person environment, right? We have students that don't always engage appropriately there as well. So our work is truly reaching out through the navigators and through all those other mechanisms and continuing to increase that. And so I'll certainly let Dr. Springer fill in the gaps that I, that I left there.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Bellamy, no gaps here. I believe that you summed that up nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, thank you, Dr. Springer. And then while you're on the call, I do want to just acknowledge the hard work and the great work that you are doing with, with your department. I was out at a tech center, an in-person tech center today and really looked at the great work that the, the volunteers and community members, as well as your staff, was doing to support students during that, with their tech support. I do have a question for you, and this is really to, how do we, this really comes back to the need for volunteers and support. If there are community members, nonprofits, faith-based organizations and institutions, or just regular community members out there who want to get involved and support MNPS in those support services that you are providing, how do they go about doing so?
Absolutely. So specific thank you, first of all, let me say thank you. And I must acknowledge the work of this entire district and central office support hub. It would not have happened unless they all band together. So the Student Services Department have been leaders in that on-the-ground execution of this work and across departments, everyone has stepped in. Each one of the chief's teams are leading sites, so it's really a beautiful time collaboration across our departments. So thanks so much.
Chief Barnes today on the ground.
On the ground, whatever. That's right, that's right. So if a community member or community organization would like to volunteer specifically for those sites, I will put the link into the chat for your teams to push out or send a, an email to you. But in terms of any of our other efforts, if you would like to just forward that information to me, I can get it to our teams. There are a variety of teams in Student Services that are willing, stand ready to take on meeting the needs of our students. So contact me and I will get them to the appropriate persons.
Okay. And then what's the best number for the community or the best email or site for them to go to if they're not coming through me, but just in, community members out in the public? How would they contact your department?
Absolutely. So this is long, but it is. MNPS, Student Support Services at, no, MNPS as Student Support Services at MNPS.org. It's long. So I'll say it again, MNPS, Student Support Services at MNPS.org. And it is an email that will come directly to our department and we check it regularly and we'll be able to align supports as needed.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then I have one question for Dr. Battle. Thank you, Dr. Springer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Battle, you had, as a part of the presentation, or maybe that was you, Dr. Springer, I apologize, but as a part of that presentation, you talked about the approval for the three stockpile days. Can you talk to us a little bit about what those stockpile days are for and how they're helping, looking, and what are they doing to support our schools?
Yes, of course. So we tonight did receive approval for use of three stockpile days and/or inclement weather days. We have six of those days. We're going to use three of those, those days to provide for additional transition and planning and PD time for our staff. The first day will happen on October 12th and we'll be getting this information out to families once we get the final approval from the commissioner to utilize the dates in this way to help our staff and teams transition into the in-person option. And part of that is just to make sure that we have our efficiencies in place and so that our, our team can truly transition and provide that high-quality experience that we want for our students regardless if it's, regardless if it's virtual or if it's in-person. The, the next two days will happen on January 5th and 6th, the start of the second semester. There will also be another planning day, PD day for teams to transition. We do anticipate after opening up the survey again in December, that we'll have families who might want to shift their preference going into the second semester. And so that additional planning time will help school staff make the necessary adjustments to prepare fully for students, particularly as we're continuing to expand upon our social distancing and other PPE requirements. And so a lot of feedback came to us from our, our teachers, our principals. I'm very thankful to you and other school board members who weighed in on that conversation to make sure that we have proper transitions and planning time for our staff to be efficient and smooth as we phase back in our students after fall break. So thank you for your feedback. Thank you to all the board members for your feedback in that regard and to everyone, every stakeholder who has weighed in on making sure that we are maximizing and utilizing those stockpile days to the greatest efficiencies and effectiveness as we navigate this very unique school year.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I have no further questions, so I'll take a state, step back. Thank you, Dr. Battle and your team.
Thank you, Dr. Nabah McKinnon. Other question, I see Ms. Tyler, go right ahead.
Let me unmute myself. There we go. So I, I have two questions. One, have we updated our guidance for families on how to handle an illness that is not COVID-related? So like if somebody just has a stuffy nose or like, I know when I used to teach, it was a student had to be fever-free without medicine for 24 hours before they were allowed to return to the classroom. So have we updated for things that don't line up with COVID symptoms but are still an, an illness? Do we have any different guidance on that?
Yes. So there are efforts, thank you for your question, there are efforts to do just that, to make sure that we don't forget about those common illnesses that will come about. Blue season is around the corner or is here. So we will definitely push that out in kid-friendly format, family-friendly format, so that, that we keep student safety and precautions at the forefront every day. Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I just got a text from a coach who was saying that student athletes aren't allowed to play in Metro unless they have insurance. And apparently in June, the group that we used to use to help our uninsured athletes get coverage long enough to be able to play, Scholastic Insurers, is no longer working with us. And we haven't been able to find anybody to do that stop, stopgap yet is what, and I do not know if that's the case. This is just what I've been told. So if I could get some more clarification on that, do we have an insurance group that we could send our uninsured athletes to so that they can still play?
Dr. Bellamy, do you have any insight into that insurance question? Of course, that has been a, a process that we've had with our athletic programs for years. I'm unaware of any changes with that, but do you have an insight to that specific question?
No, ma'am. I've not been made aware of any changes to it, but I'm certainly happy to make some calls and follow up and, and get you that answer just as soon as I can.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I think there's, there's a large amount of students who, who are going to need something to provide them enough coverage to play, even if it's just a small, basic coverage plan for the time. So yeah, I really appreciate that. Please let me know and, and we'll get that information out to the public as soon as possible.
Certainly will do.
Okay, I'm all done. All right, thank you both. Ms. Elrod.
Thank you. I have one last question I forgot to ask. And I, I believe it's probably going to be for Dr. Springer. So I know that we have on-the-ground tech support for schools and for our teachers. My hope is that we're able to provide that support, we're going to continue to provide that support in many different ways, but I know that we've had, which has been brought up by some questions by my colleagues, some schools or we'll say groups within schools that have chose to use Zoom instead of Teams. And now some of those teachers are having some difficulty readjusting back to Teams. Is there a way for us to provide additional tech support to those teachers to kind of help with this transition time this week? Whether it be more people on the ground at those individual schools that made that choice or reaching out to those teachers individually if they have issues?
I'll speak to the tech support that will be at the school level, then I'll ask Dr. Bellamy to come in and provide additional information. But for tech support, we realize that just with the sheer number of students and families that come to our health centers daily, that we'll need to continue this in some capacity. So we will be supporting our schools through that transition as they begin to take on more and more of supporting our families with tech support, providing training, providing access to materials that we have used at the sites to help our families, to the tech, tech support specialists that we've been able to have access to as well. So we'll continue to provide that support and make a seamless transition back to the school to be able to address those technology needs. And I'm going to pass it on over to Dr. Bellamy to finish out.
Thank you. So Dr. Renfro's instructional technology team has a vast array of resources that, that we've used as the, as the, the school, the school year got underway. And so I don't want to speak for, for resources that may not be there yet, but my understanding from, from using that library myself, I believe there's quite a few on-demand videos, for lack of better terms, as far as Teams functionality. But I also know that his support team, we, we've certainly got a, a great deal of instructional support that we can connect any teacher to. And so I think any teacher that, that made the decision to, to not use Teams, and again, just to say, we, we are a Teams district and we have been communicating that. So we would love to see that they are, they're using Teams now and we are here to support them as, as they do so. So I would encourage them to connect probably through their principal, to, to their tech team, to their executive director, and then ultimately to myself if they need to. And we will make sure they get connected to, to whatever they feel like the support they need is. Our tech team has done plenty of live sessions and, and they do them oftentimes when a need arises that they see. And so I, I don't want to speak and tell you exactly about a resource that may or may not be right there for them right now, but I'm confident we have them and that we will direct them to it.
Okay. So if we, if we were to have a school that a lot of teachers chose to do Zoom instead of Teams and now that they have appropriate, or they have, more of them have the appropriate computers, not to say that the computers were always the issue, but now all teachers have new computers. computers and so there are no device issues that might have been limiting their ability for using Teams. And so we're now telling them, we've got to use Teams to be in compliance with what we need to do as a system. If we have this school that has a lot of past usage with Zoom, we just need to ask that principal, or we should encourage that principal, to reach out about the virtual supports for tech support to try to help a lot of their teacher groups kind of become more comfortable during this week's transition.
Yeah, if you've got a principal that is telling you their teachers feel ill-equipped to use Microsoft Teams, I would encourage that principal to reach out directly to their executive director and then to me. They're welcome to CC me on that email and we will make sure that we'll find, one, why they might be missing the support in the first place so that we can make sure that we're communicating appropriately and that they're aware of what supports are out there. But we'll get them what they need so that they can adequately instruct our students virtually and in person. You know, not that they'd be using Teams very much in person, but we'll get them what they need to instruct our students in the appropriate ways if they'll just have their principal reach out and kind of outline the supports they envision their staff needing.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your help.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
All right, Dr. Nabah McKenney, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just had one question that came up related to athletics. I don't know who this question would go to, but the question was around middle school, seventh and eighth grade sports. Will students in middle school be able to play games this year? Has there been discussion about it or any decisions?
We have certainly had some discussions with our athletics committee, but we have not announced their return to play right now. We're aware certainly that we have some middle school teams and that those students would like to get on the fields as well. And so we'll continue, because they're not in a TWSA season the way our high school athletes are, we are going to wait and look at all the data and guidance at the time and continue to determine that. But we have not announced a return for right now. We have not given any green light for our middle schools to begin practice or play.
And I was just going to add, we have provided guidance and support to our middle school coaches and sponsors around opportunities to engage with their athletes or their participants in their programs to keep them growing, learning, developing in their particular area of focus. So they have received guidance and are connecting with students currently as they prepare for future opportunities for competitions and performances.
And Dr. Battle, I think I'd also be remiss not to mention that we've provided similar guidance to all of our fine arts as well. So it's not, I know athletics is what we talk a lot about, but we've also been paying attention to the other extracurriculars and the fine arts at the high school levels as well.
Thank you. And then a follow-up question, I'm sorry, Ms. Masters. And then, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Go ahead, Ms. Masters.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to tag it on about the fine arts because that was actually on my list for tonight as well. I know that particularly some of the dancers are having trouble managing dance class through Microsoft Teams. And so I'm wondering what sort of efforts might be made to get those artists back to in-person and yet safely distant programs? I know in high school, like will they be waiting until January for in-person rehearsals or will we maybe be able to make some accommodations for them?
The guidance we have given to high school fine arts at this point is that they are able to begin meeting and practicing following the same guidelines we put out, which at this point was everyone was outdoors, keeping in mind that we, until volleyball starts, we've not had athletes allowed in the building. And so we have had, we've given guidance, for example, for drama productions that they are able to rehearse in socially distant ways outdoors. And so if there's a particular club sponsor or athletic sponsor that feels like they're missing the guidance of how they might, they'd be able to proceed, please connect them to Mr. Sanders, our athletic director at the district level, and myself, and we'll make sure they get the guidance they need. I don't want to comment on dance specifically because I don't have that guidance in front of me right this minute, and we have given guidance on many, many, many areas.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Nabah McKenney.
I remember it now. So this is also in line with, of course, our fine arts, but also our academies, where many of our academies require a lot of hands-on instruction for them to engage in their academy. As students return for high school in January, will there be any opportunities where they can kind of make up or engage in those academy classes that they took this semester but had to do virtually to kind of make up for that hands-on experience that they need?
I'll certainly let Dr. Williams chime in here if he'd like to, as he has supervised our CTE department and some of our academy classes longer than I have. But you know, the nature of the hands-on work of CTE is certainly difficult to accomplish virtually. We have had some unique programs that we're looking at offering the certification testings for in safe, socially distant ways. But I'll let Dr. Williams chime in as far as if we've talked about or had a conversation about kind of making up possibly the missed efforts from this fall, I'll say that Ms. Gilli in charge of our academies is passionate and it would shock me if she has not had a plan and she's already been in Dr. Williams' ear, Bill.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question and I think Dr. Bellamy is absolutely right. If any of us know Donna Gilli, she will definitely make sure that the experience that kids get when they return will more than make up for anything that they may have lost being out of school. So certainly expect to have plans coming forward as we transition our high school kids back in January.
Thank you for that. Oh, that's it for me, Ms. Bugs.
Thank you, Dr. Nabah McKenney. Any other questions before we move on? Well, thank you, MNPS team. I want to give you all the flowers while we have you. Thank you for just making this work for parents, teachers, and students. We're going to move on to announcements then. Remember, you can continue to ask for updates or questions of your school board members. Feel free to reach out to us via email and we can connect you either to Central Office or get a response for you. So with that, we'll start with Dr. Gentry in District One. What kind of announcements do you have for us?
Hi, thank you. It was a lot. So I just want to just share, and I feel like I'm always bringing sad news, but shared that Ms. Marsha Taylor, who was the immediate past principal at Robert Churchwell, passed away on September the 8th. As you may recall, she retired in 2019 and returned to Michigan to be with her family. The Robert Churchwell family is planning a celebration to honor her. It was scheduled for this week but has been postponed. So just keep your eye on social media for a rescheduling of that event. And I just want to say that, you know, if you had the opportunity to have a conversation with Ms. Taylor about her students, you got to see and hear and feel what compassion and meeting students where they are at their point of need actually looks like. She was a strong advocate for her Churchwell Bears. She believed that they were capable of great things and she came to the table with sleeves rolled up, fighting for them every time she engaged me as a board member or our director of school. So she was definitely missed upon her retirement, but we understood the circumstances that definitely led to her needing to make that decision. And we certainly ask that you continue to think of her in your thoughts, her family, her friends, the Churchwell family, and that school community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod.
Thank you. So I have several, so I'm going to pull up my Word document. Okay, so first I need to provide an update on Pencil. So Pencil received the Tennessee Cares Program grant and that is allowing them to expand their warehouse, which is where the LP pencil box operates. And this is really incredible news for them as not only does it help, of course, their warehouse and capacity, but it also helps their ability to service our students and teachers. And we've been relying and asking Pencil to do more and more this year in this new world and we are planning to continue to ask for those additional services and assistance. So this is wonderful news and I wanted to make sure that we were all aware of it. Along that note, this week is Coordinator's Appreciation Week. And so I want to highlight Ms. Mary Gilde with Pencil's Family Resource Center at Tuscaloosa Elementary. She is tirelessly dedicated to the students and families at Tuscaloosa. Every time I have ever seen her, whether it's in the resource center or outside on the board floor even, she is telling me about the work that's being done there and there is much to be proud of with all the work that she is doing, not only for our students, but our families and our community. In preparation of coming back to person and school, our HERO program works with another group, a nonprofit called Unicycle. Unicycle basically recycles uniforms. So it helps us with our requirements, which of course, as we have talked about during this board meeting, are dependent on each individual school and how they're handling our school or standard school attire or SSA. But you may not know that I'm the touchpoint for at the central office drop-off box for Unicycle. So if you are going through, if you've been watching the organizing show on Nextdoor, I mean on Netflix, excuse me, or whatever it is, and you're going through everything and you have pants and polo shirts and shoes and coats that are gently used and can be used by our students, in essence, the rule is if you would send your own child to school in it, you can donate it to us, Unicycle. We are in need of those things. Overton families, please be aware that the midterm exams are taking place September 29th and 30th. Exams count for 20% of your students' grades. More information was provided last week in Dr. Pittman's email and then in yesterday's weekly news and events that was sent out. And on October 20th, Overton is offering an in-school, no-cost ACT opportunity for seniors only, only for seniors. Registration for transportation is required, but free transportation is also available. And you also have to register for this ACT opportunity. Also at Overton, math, English, science, and EL tutoring is still available on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 3:15 to 4 o'clock. Please see those teachers for those tutoring options. Overton's Pride Club is available and having, hold on, Overton's Pride Club, which is to support LGBTQ students and their allies, and they have open enrollment. They're meeting on Wednesday, September 23rd. Thank you to Ms. Bervos, which is known as Ms. B, for supporting this club within John Overton. And OSA is also having their introductory meeting on Wednesday, September 23rd via Teams, and it's during the PLT time, which is 10:55 to 11:40. Lastly, well, not lastly, second to last, we have a board retreat and that's coming up on Friday, October the 2nd at the Martin Center. It's going to be from 8:30 to 3:00. We are not able, as Chair Bugs, myself are not able to make this mandatory, but we do really, 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 really nicely ask that everyone is in attendance. We are going to be discussing not only strategic planning that we have had some previous discussions on through the evaluation committee, but we're going to be discussing all kinds of things. It's also imperative for us as a group to get to know each other as we have a lot of new members. And for those of us that do know each other, we have not seen each other much. Keep that in mind. So it's really important that you can clear your schedule as best as you can or let one of us know as soon as possible if you're not going to be able to attend that so we can try to have as many of our board members in attendance for that board retreat. And then lastly, I am disappointed in the State Board of Ed are recently overturning two of our recent denial decisions on charter school applications. We are locally elected as a school board to make those decisions on behalf of our constituents in metro schools and the State Board of Ed is not elected, they are appointed. So they do not represent our district, nor do they have any accountability to it. So very concerning, there's a no appeals process to this decision and I think it's maybe one of only one of the state's decisions that cannot be appealed. So they're ruling to overturn our decision, not only just this time, but the several other times that we have discussed on the board floor will have generational effects on our operating budget. And this overreach of responsibilities should be concerning and we should all be worried about those things. And I want to make sure that we are all aware that this has happened again and that we need to continue to advocate and work on those applications and be better prepared on what those reasonings are of whether we decide to deny or not. And then to make sure that we also are aware of what's going on within that state government reach and making sure that it's concerning, not only for our schools and our city's budget, but also just in the role of state government within our schools. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mrs. Masters.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. I wanted to be sure that everyone is aware that we are going to have a career exploration fair this year with, through our academies of Nashville, but it will be virtual and they are still accepting video submissions around any career that might be of interest to highlight to students. This information helps our academy students choose which academy they want to look at for 10th through 12th grade. And if you just go to alignmentnashville.org and click on the link, you can look at all of the information about how you can submit a three-minute video that can help us have a virtual career exploration fair. So I hope that everyone out there who does something unique and interesting for a career will participate.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Masters. All right, Dr. Brusina Nabah McKenney.
Hey, so I have a couple of announcements. The first announcement is the month of September is the Governor's Literacy Initiative to support early literacy. So we're, as a part of that initiative, they're partnering with the Predators to kind of promote early literacy across the state of Tennessee. So again, this is the Governor's Initiative for the month of September to promote early literacy across the state of Tennessee. And we're really asking all parents, community members, everyone to really engage in that early literacy piece. Pick up a book, read with your child, enjoy the time of reading because we know the impact on early literacy for our kids in our early grades. So let's really get together and promote that and make a social media buzz around that. So read a book with your child and then post a video on social media so that we can really increase the awareness around early literacy. The second thing is the Tennessee Valley Authority, I guess partnering with Pencil as well, has a STEM classroom grant for teachers. The application process, the deadline to apply is October 15th. So encouraging all teachers who are looking to implement STEM, STEM project-based learning opportunities within their classroom to please apply for that grant. Again, the grant application deadline is October 15th. Another thing that I would like to do is thank Dr. Battle and Mr. Prophet and happy to announce that Two Rivers is finally on the road or in the steps to get an HVAC system within their school. They have been waiting for a long time to get that. If you don't know about Two Rivers, they still have wall units within their classrooms. So we're happy to announce that they have started the process. The process will take a minute, but throughout the school year, we are working to get those steps in place so that within this school year, hopefully by the end of the school year, we will have a new HVAC system at Two Rivers Middle School. And so we're happy, we're really excited about that. And again, thank you, Dr. Battle and Mr. Prophet for your work and your initiative and getting that started. We really, really appreciate it at Two Rivers. And that's it for my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nabah McKenney. All right, Mrs. Bush.
Yes, thank you. So we got notice that Kip Antioch College Prep High School was approved by the state. And we know, everyone knows on this board, that charters are not popular amongst some of our board members. And as I've stated before, the denial by the board in the beginning is that I am all about choice for my families out here in Antioch and the Cambridge cluster. I am the fastest-growing district in the southeast Davidson County. I am the fastest-growing district in the southeast Davidson County. And parents want choice. That's what they've always said they wanted. And I would never choose politics over the people. So therefore, they did get approved by the state. We do need more schools in our community. Is charter the first choice? No, absolutely not. But unfortunately, I am growing very, we are growing very fast out here. Parents want choice, and I have to listen to the parents and making sure our students are taken care of also. And if you look at my numbers on both my Cambridge and Antioch High Schools, they are at capacity. So therefore, I will be bringing notice to have Kip Antioch College Prep High School on the October 13th agenda, recommend an approval for the high school to be a part of MNPS. We can have more discussion around that when we meet on October 13th. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Frida Player-Peters?
Whoops, okay, sorry. There we go. It's on mute. I just want to say today is National Voter Registration Day. So all of our students who are 18, well, no, our students who will be 18 on Election Day. So if you're 17 right now, but if you would turn 18 on Election Day, you can register to vote. And if you are already 18, please register to vote just to be involved in the civic process of being, just being part of an American citizen. So I ask all of our students who are of age to please vote and exercise your democratic duty as a citizen. And then also, I just want to honor the passing of Justice Ginsburg. For those who, as you know, student of government, for those who fan that this we as a board, really this kind of, hopefully we can emulate her morals, her rigor. She came over a lot of obstacles, both personal and professional, particularly those students who are mothers. She was a great example and a role model that you still can achieve excellence, even though you may have some circumstances that were unexpected, but you still can achieve high academic standards and set the standard. And so I just hope our students model her tenacity and her perseverance. This personally, what she's gone through and recognize the barriers for women in legal profession, those young women particularly, but even men who go into the law profession. That she was a ground barrier and a thinker who thought outside the box and challenged our Constitution. But also, what more importantly, what she has done is show how to govern and how to govern a people who oppose someone against you, that her and Antonin Scalia, rest in peace, too, show how to model, how to govern in truth and in fact and in principle and in theory, and to back it up with high academic standards and high rigors and high legal standards. And hopefully, as we're a Board of Nine, as the Supreme Court is a Board of Nine, that we may govern in the same aspects of that and that we come with a high standard of excellence and a high standard of policy and a higher standard of setting precedence of what we are doing. We're being thoughtful of what precedents we're setting down the road as board members, as leaders, as we govern. So I just want to recognize that. And as we go into a retreat, just hopefully our board members will kind of think and reflect at how we can be more like Justice Ginsburg and setting the standard as women as to think beyond the standard and push ourselves to academic excellence as we govern over 85,000 students and over 10,000 teachers. And really think that, and just thank Dr. Battle and the administration for their work. I know it's a lot that they've done over the past couple of months. It has not been an easy road to administer policies, to come up with hard academic decisions. But just want to say thank you for your effort. So I want to thank you for your effort for that because I know it's been a long haul for the last couple of days. But thank you for your effort, and we just greatly appreciate it. I just want to express that. So thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Player-Peters. All right, and Mrs. Poopa Walker?
Hey there. Real quickly, want to give a big shout out to Jerry Altieri and the entire team at Harris Hillman, who came back this week. And welcome to back students. I went over and got to see them. Really inspiring group of educators and team members. And want to really thank them for all their hard work and paving the way for the rest of us. Want to just give a shout out to all of the Nashvilleians working on the Hillsborough Construction Project. The only maybe silver lining of kids not being there is they're finished faster. They're moving on to Phase Three, which is the parking deck and athletic field. So they'll be ready for kids when they come back. Encourage folks to fill out their census forms if they haven't already. And then the last thing I want to say is that it is Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. And I want to just honor that by reading a very short poem by Elizabeth Acevedo from her book Clap When You Land. I promise it's short. And it is to her tia. Tia in Spanish is an aunt. So she says, "Tia is the single love of my life, the woman I want to be one day. All raised eyebrows and calloused hands, a hairy upper lip stretched over her mouth that has seen death and illness and hurt, but never forgets how to smile or tell a joke. Because of her, I too have known death and illness and life and healing. I've watched Tia's every move until I could read the Morse code of sweat beads on her forehead. So when I say I want to be a doctor, I know exactly what that means. This means curing is in my blood, and everyone here knows the most respected medical schools are in the United States. I want to take what I've learned from Tia's life, dedicated to aid, and build a life where I can help others. There have been many days when Poppy's check comes late and we have to count how many eggs we have left or how long the meat will stretch. I don't want Tia and me to always live this way. I will make it, I will make it, I will make it easier for both of us. Gracias."
Thank you for that, Mrs. Poopa Walker. Thank you. All right, and Mrs. Tyler?
Yes, I just wanted to take a minute and thank, or not thank, but just recognize our 19 Nashville students who have earned the honor of being in the National Merit Scholarship Program as semifinalists. I was really excited to see that we have 19 students that have earned that from Martin Luther King Jr., from Hume Fog School, from Hillsborough, and then District Nine's own Hillwood High School. So I was very excited to see that academic excellence, especially going on with what's been happening lately. And just wanted to honor them and all their hard work.
Thank you for that. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you, MNPS staff for joining us tonight, answering questions, putting things out to the community. I do want to echo the sentiments of many around the world who mourn the passing of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And I think it's especially poignant right now as a nine-member board of women that I read just a couple of the quotes that, you know, just the more you go down rabbit holes of her life, the more you understand just how powerful and impactful she was. But when asked, when I'm asked sometimes, when will there be enough women on the Supreme Court? My answer is, when there are nine. People are shocked. But there had been nine men, and nobody's ever raised a question about that. And I think that speaks to so many different awakenings that are happening around America now with gender, with race relations, with just acceptance of people as people. And I think she serves as a guiding light and as an example of what many of us can aspire to be. And with that, I cannot thank Nashville enough. Parents, teachers, staff, community members, Dr. Battle and your team just for making what is not at all a fun situation for any of us, make it more doable. You know, making students have access to food while they're not able to be with their friends, giving access to connectivity and, you know, closing the digital gap and the digital divides. We did not ask for this pandemic. We are trying our best to support each other through it. But, Dr. Battle, you have the MNPS Board of Education. You have our support. You have answered every question. You are accessible. We appreciate you, no matter what, no matter how uncomfortable this is for you to navigate this for 85,000 students, almost 40,000 families. We appreciate you. We know we have work to do, but we're here to support you. So with that, be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned.